So Wednesday, April second, twenty twenty five, nine o'clock A M. I'd like to call the Bank County Board of Commissioners to order. To avoid meeting disruptions, please play cell phones and beepers in silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The Board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Is Commissioner Jacobson on?
I'm looking for you.
All Commissioners in the chambers except Commissioner Jacobson, who will announce as soon as he gets online. Will you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Brings us to public participation. No action, we take them on any item until there's properly agendas. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak on public participation are asked to state their name for the record, and will be limited to three minutes. The Board will conduct public comment after discussion of each action item, but before the Board takes any action. Any public comment? Not seeing any online. We'll have an announcement from Commissioner Jacobson. This brings us to, uh, both possible action, review and adoption of agenda. Comment? Any public comment? Entertaining motion?
Move to approve the agenda as posted.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Castaneda. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes port to zero. Bring this to the regular agenda, Tom, Tom Taylor, for possible action, improve the line county, county budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Mr. Chair, if we could wait just one second, uh, boy.
It'll take a five minute recess?
Yeah.
It is nine oh three, we'll be back, or nine oh four, we're back at nine oh nine. Chairman Keller. Mr. Haskin, can you hear me?
You can hear me just fine. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Something from the email?
Yeah. So.
Okay, launch meeting.
I clicked that before.
Download, download, having issues or. Bring from your browser, try to join, just join from your browser. I'll put it down.
It's around nine. Come back from recess and go back to the control, uh, for the record, Mr. Jacobson. And I just want to say that as they go through, and we can stop you at any time, instead of. Next one, it's a question, if it doesn't get too, too bad, it'd be easier than run back and forth through the chair.
Good morning, Andrew Haskin, line county manager, for the record. I just wanted to provide, wanted to provide a comment before. A difficult budget year. It was a little different than what we've seen in the past few years. We saw a slight increase in revenues, but about two point three percent, which you'll see in your budget packet, but expenses went up about seven point one percent, which obviously be different out, otherwise it doesn't work out. I really want to thank Control Poli for all of his hard work that he put into getting us to a place where we can make the math work out, and he'll get into the details of that today as we go through this. Want to thank the, so. I mean, um, they were through our conversations and through the budget process, they were able to cut over eight hundred thousand dollars out of their services and supplies budgets, which is huge. And so I, I really appreciate all the hard work that they put in. As you all know, there's not a lot of extras budget anyway. And so, you know, the fact that they were able to come out, come up with eight hundred thousand dollars out of that, that's really impressive. Finally, he approached the Line County Employees Association. As you know, we entered into a two-year contract with them last year, and budgeted for this year was a three percent increase in salaries as part of that contract. So we approached them to determine if we wanted to, um, if, or if do, it's their decision because we do have a contract. If they wanted to forego the three percent increase to save positions, or if they wanted to receive their three percent increase in those positions. They chose to receive their increase, so today we will be proposing to cut, um, like five, five positions. Work on that. The positions that we're going to be opposing will be our, our positions that are either currently vacant or will be vacant by that, by July one. So with that, I will turn it over to Control and Foley for the meat of the presentation, but I just wanted to add some comments on that and provide a little bit of context as we go into this budget process.
Morning, everyone. Josh Poli, Line County Control, for the record. Mr. Jacobson, we do miss having you in person. There's some Twizzlers that you can have tomorrow when you come visit.
Roger that. Thanks, buddy. I appreciate you.
Those have already disappeared.
Oh, they've disappeared already?
Wouldn't have it any other way, Commissioner Hendricks.
So I just wanted to start off, similar to Andrew's comments, I really appreciate all the work that the department has put into this, and we have had a number of meetings with them. This, this budget is a little unique compared to some of the other ones that I've been over the years in that I don't know that I have ever seen such a significant number of bills at the legislature that have fiscal and that potential for the counties to go forward. And just to make sure I don't screw up, Commissioner Mark Twain's quote, no man's life, liberty, or property are safe while the legislature is in session. So with that being said, we haven't built this budget around the legislature. We've included one potential bill from the legislature, which is S B one sixteen regarding an increase in elected official salaries. They haven't received it, an increase since two thousand, fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen, it might be seventeen, nineteen. Anyways, it's been a number of years since they've received it. So that's built in. It's approximately two hundred thousand dollars that we built into the budget, additional based on the current language. If that does change over the legislative session, that's something we can address at final budget perhaps, and a number of the figures are still being nailed down as we speak. The governor's budget, we're a little farther out on the governor's budget than we have been in prior sessions, and so literally got some confirmation at almost five o'clock last night, to be able to provide more, so the numbers have been a little more fluid this and a little longer to get nailed down, going along, which is part of the reason don't like that we brought to the board called an unbalanced budget. Technically, under state laws, balanced, meaning you haven't spent all of the fund balances that are down to negative cash, but the balance we try and do is think, look at our ongoing revenues, what we're going to get year after year, and that goes up to our ongoing expenses or expenditures, so that we're negotiating significant raises off the money we're going to have this year, but not next year. And so we try and match those up. So when we go through here, I'm going to talk about a number of things on how that balancing address or impacts us in the general fund, but let me just go in and say that the recommended budget for the Board to consider today includes no additional positions. It includes no reclassification of employees or promotions of employees other than what we call job, family, and line promotions. I'll give you an example. The utilities tech, one gets their certifications for water or sewer, and the job description automatically on their anniversary provides for a promotion in line in that job family. Same for an appraiser trainee where they receive their certifications, they automatically in the job description on their evaluation, they would move up to move to an appraiser because of certifications. Those are the only promotions that are included in here are those job family promotions. Justice for Court One and Justice for Court Two, those type of promotions are what we're talking about. There's a three percent across the board salary table increase for all employees other than elected officials and and Line County Sheriff Employees Association. Two reasons for that. Number one, we're in contract with the employees or with the Line County Employees Association, and we treat those who are not able to be represented historically the same percentages as those who are. We don't have to, but there's a past precedence in doing it, and so we recommend the Board consider that as we move forward. There's also a step increase for, or a long-term increase in the Sheriff's Employees Association case for every employee on their, on their anniversary week. So with that being said, when we take the three percent plus the two and a half percent, you're talking about five and a half percent for every employee outside of Sheriff's Association. We have a budget for percentage increase for their salary table because we're in negotiations right now, so we're taking the contract as it is right now and putting that into the budget. There's also for regular employees, non-Sheriff employees, a three point two five percent hers increase. So if you add all of those up, the regular employees are getting an increase of eight point seven five percent in this recommendation. The Sheriff's employees, because we're just budgeting for the step increase slash longevity, and they, their person is going to pay eight point seven five percent. We're getting an increase actually of eleven point two five percent with their existing contract, regardless of what those negotiations come out to. That's what's built into the contract as of today. So regular employees, eight point seven five percent, when you add those factors, Sheriff Employees Association, eleven point two five. So when you look at the two, the Sheriff's Employees Association is already set without any negotiations to be at a higher percentage. This was a, a tighter budget year. It's the first year that we've actually sat down and anticipated significant cuts. Like the county manager said, we have over eight hundred thousand dollars with the voluntary cuts. We sat down with each department head. We have also sat down with each department head and done the what-if scenarios. If we had to remove additional positions out of your department or remove positions out of your department, what would that look like? Where would you do that? What services supplies would you cut to get there before you do that? And those type of discussions with different departments. We have those in the back of our mind for when we get to final budget. Part of the discussion today has that in it. Part of it is, we'll get to final budget, and possibly if the legislature does some significant impacts to us that happen after the final budget is over. We do have a period in July or in June where we can amend our final budget based on what the legislature adopts, and so those may come forward as discussion points in the future. I just want to let you know, this is a unique year. It may be that we have multiple budget discussions on this. A lot of times we have a budget discussion this time, and some minor, minor tweaks to the final budget, and off we go, which year might be different. It also might be different as we move forward because what we are seeing in the economy, right, wrong, or indifferent, and it's cyclical, is we're seeing potentially shrinking in some of our key revenue sources. This next year, not property, so I'll go over that, but consolidated taxes are continuing to show us, and those are essentially mostly your sales taxes. They're continuing to show that we're slowing down on those, even starting to potentially decrease on those. So it's possible we get into next fiscal year, and we say, you know, we built the budget on this because we're required to do a budget by April fifteenth, the tender budget, final budget by the end of May. Have to have those in. They're set in stone at that point, but that doesn't mean the money that we put in there is actually going to be received. And so we may come back partway through next year and say, we need to look at freezing positions, we need to look at some other ways to so you can get where we need to be, and at that point, we may come back and have further discussions. I don't have any wood here, you have some, knock on some wood. Hopefully, we don't get to that point, but I just want to let you know the, the tea leaves out there are pointing that direction as we move forward. Andrew has some words to listen for.
Andrew Haskin, my team, Andrew, something that I forgot to mention in my presentation or my, my intro was that we are not the only county out there that is experiencing similar challenges as far as revenues not coming in at the same increase as expenses. So I do want to highlight that.
Okay. Thank you. Josh Poli, Line County Control, for the record again. I do want to say, in the governmental funds, we have no new positions. In the utilities funds, they're not funded from the same sources of sales taxes or the property taxes. They're actually funded by user fees, water and sewer fees to their users. They have been growing over time because with growth, they've had new users. As that happens, you need to increase staffing because you have more miles of pipe to maintain, you have more more equipment that have to be maintained, and so there's a recommendation in the budget to add two full-time equivalent employees into the utilities. We may need to, between now and final budget, add one more employee to their, to the utilities. We're just trying to, to iron out Willow Creek General Improvement District and Silver Springs General Improvement District to see if we can continue contracting those out with the Silver Springs Mutual Water Company and with the city of Yeritown, what the prices look like, and if it makes sense for us to continue those, or if it makes sense for us to take those in-house. More to come on that. The budget's not built on significant change, bringing that employee, if there is an employee in yet, but we will bring that back to you. Like I said, this is an unusual budget. It's still a little bit more fluid than I like. I like to have a final budget document, or a tentative, and we move on, but we'll bring some more information back to you. With that being said, just general highlights, I'm going to focus mostly on the general fund because that's where the majority of our dollars are outside utility spends. We have the general fund, which is basically think of your general checking. Everything that doesn't have to be accounted for by special legislation or certain resolutions, just goes into the general fund, just like your general checkbook, you pay for your utilities and your mortgage, if you have one, and food and those type of things, all of those just come out of your general checking account. Think of the general fund as that. We have all the, all the different departments, they don't have to, of course, separate there. So in the general fund, we are projecting a, well, let me, let me start a document itself. Andrew, if you'll pull up the document on screen, I'm going to take the Board to the revenue projection tab, which starts on page one. One of your budget documents. See a, a history from fiscal year two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty six for property taxes and for consolidating taxes. Now I'll give you some pretty graphs in the pages afterwards that tell you a little more information on these, so you can get a visual of them. But what I want to draw your attention to is the property tax change for the general fund is an increase of seven point two six percent for this next year. And the general fund, that revenue is approximately thirty four, about thirty five percent of the revenues are going to the general fund as well. So that's going up a good measure, which is a good thing because, you know, we're increasing by that amount. We look at consolidated tax. It's anticipated from where we estimate the current year to be at the moment. We still only have information through halfway through January on actual collections, so starting in November is where we started to see decreases in sales tax revenue compared to what we were getting before that. We were getting increases each month, and when they started decreasing. So we have November, December, and half of January's information so far, but starting to decline. That's why I'm hesitant to say this is really what we're going to get for next year or this year. That may change as we go. But it's a point three one percent for next year, and that is a little over forty percent of the revenues in general, forty two, forty three percent. So that's a significant piece that isn't rising nearly as fast as, as expenditure. So let's move on to page two, page two, which shows the property tax relates history for the county over the past few years, past ten years. We are not recommending a change in property tax between funds in any way, shape, or form at this point. There's also not an increase or a decrease in them. We do not have the ability to increase property taxes, and even if we wish, they are capped out nine percent. We don't have the ability to increase sales taxes in any way, shape, or form without going to burden people at this point, or actually using it for salaries and benefits isn't something that we can do on the additional rates that are out there. Using for certain things, that isn't something we can do. So we're very limited on our revenue side on what we. Let's move on to page three. This takes a look at the assessed valuation countywide. We have the top of page three shows the actual assessed valuation over the past ten years. The bottom just shows a percentage change from year to year. You can see for the past four years, that percentage change is decreasing. It only went up three point seven seven percent. So the natural question comes in my mind is why isn't, why is the revenue going up seven point one percent, and this is only why I have three point seven seven percent? The reason for that is because the way the property tax cap works is we have a bunch of people that if you calculated their tax bill based on their assessed valuation times the tax rate, it comes out to a certain dollar figure, but we don't actually tax them that much because they're capped. If it's a personal, primary, personal residence, there's a three percent increase from year to year. So there's a significant, if it's not personal residence, it's eight percent. So there's a significant portion of abatement that's out there that's being used up as we go. So we're actually getting higher higher tax revenue, and people's taxes are increasing, even though their assessed valuation isn't going up because they have what we call the baiting, which is the difference between what the tax bill is and what the tax bill would be without the tax cap. And so that difference is becoming smaller and smaller. So we're, we're going to see for a time period during economic recession, we usually see what we did during the Great Recession is that over time shrink went all the way to zero, and so their tax bill equals what, what this s valuation was by the tax rate, and you usually see that when the consolidated tax starts decreasing in a recession or in a. The good news for us is when consolidated tax goes down, sometimes the assessed or property taxes revenues go up, so they kind of even out for a time period. When you get to the point that abatement's done, if the consolidated taxes don't, don't start going back up, that's that's where we end up in a situation like we did back in two thousand ten, eleven, twelve, where it was very, we ended up cutting about thirty five percent of our staffing. So these are things that we see storm clouds on the horizon. This is something natural that you see downturn in the economy over time, and sales tax usually lasts somewhere between eighteen months and three years. Great recession lasted significantly longer than that. Don't know what this is going to look like, but we'll, we'll do it year by year and month by month. We'll move on to the next page. And this shows the actual tax revenue from year to year, and you can see this looks a lot like an assessed valuation graph because we talked about. This looks a lot like the assessed valuation graph because we talked about. Property tax cap. Uh, decrease in the abatement. So we're actually seeing an increase, but we're seeing less of an increase this next year than what we've seen over the past four years. So that's where the budget's starting to get tighter on revenues. It's not like we've stopped increasing revenues. We're still increasing revenues. Our expenditure is going up faster. We're moving to page five. Got the just working with the general fund, not countywide, at the property tax revenue. And you can see there was a big increase last year probably attached to revenue. The reason for that is. We moved three cents of property tax rate from the medical energy fund to the general fund and balance of one year. So you're seeing overall, it didn't really change our taxes that significantly, but the general fund, we did an infusion. And that's how we were able to afford the thirteen percent increase from the Sheriff's Employees Association, the five percent increase for. Is by moving tax revenue to the general fund much. Don't have that option every year. Uh, at some point, your out of tax rate can move around. Move on to page six. Well, that's revenue. You can see. That our estimate of the current year, and this could still decrease, shows a point seven percent decrease at the bottom. Compared to what we received actually last. And then next year is a point three percent. Increase from what we're receiving this year. I do want to draw your attention to the very top of the page, the actual numbers. If you look at two thousand twenty-four. We have twenty-one. Million eight hundred forty-eight thousand. Twenty-five, we have twenty-one million seven hundred thousand and twenty-six, twenty-one million seven hundred sixty-seven thousand. Two thousand twenty-six for next year is projected to be lower than what we actually got in two thousand twenty-four. So we're looking at. Almost half of the revenues in the general fund. Not growing or declining, and that's why we're having some challenges on balancing the budget. Not unique to us. As Andrew was saying, you can go on the news and Google Washoe County. Uh, budget. You can look at the city of Reno's budget. They're in the news, city of Sparks budget. They're all coming across the same thing. We're having those. Those same consolidated tax challenges uh across the board. So if we move to page seven. When we combine in the general fund, our consolidated property taxes, and that gets you to approximately. Um. What is it? Close to seventy percent of the budget, revenue budget. We're going up three point four percent. For those combined. And so that's a big portion of it. A lot of the other ones in the county's budget are staying flat. So we have flat on the rest of them on, I like building permit fees or. Business license fees. Those are some of our larger other revenues. When you average them out, what we ended up with in the budget pack, two point three percent. I do have a little bit of good news when we get to the balancing section. Um, there are a couple of revenues. After looking at a mid-month in March and then looking at them as of the end of March significantly changed. And I'll give you an example, the building permits. For the month of March increased by over two hundred thousand dollars. Um, so there's some where we can go in and say that they can do a little bit more. The investment income. Looking at it, and this one's a tricky figure. Let me explain why it's a tricky figure. Let's say you have a. We take some of the money and invest it into a. Uh, fixed investment like a CD, which is what we're doing with a lot of the investments. Um, Stacy. The great treasurer's been managing the higher rate return. And let's say you buy a CD for a thousand dollars, just using out of a thousand dollars. You buy a CD for a thousand dollars and it's a five percent rate of return. It's a one-year CD. You're going to earn fifty dollars over the next year of investment income off of that CD. However. If interest rates drop, which they have over the past few months, that CD, if you were to go out and sell it as of today. Might be worth, and I'm just going to make a figure, it's going to be a higher figure, but it gives you a trim, I understand, might be worth. Eleven hundred dollars. So we go in to our books each month and we say. It's the fair market value of our investment. Well, it just went up a hundred dollars and we're going to book that as investment income, a hundred dollars of investment income. Guess what? That's not cash. That's what we call unrealized investments. We're never going to get that money unless we sell it. If we hold on to that money for a year, we're going to get our thousand dollars back plus fifty. We're putting in our books as eleven hundred dollars. Which we're never going to see. And so, and we're not selling because we want the investment income. So when we're looking at the investment income, we have to realize. It's not all there. It looks really pretty. But it's not all there. And so as we go over time over the next year, we'll end up writing that investment down against investment income to give back to the thousand dollars that we're going to get. And we'll end up recognizing fifty dollars worth of investment income. So I just want you to realize when we're on the investment income, it's a little more tricky to come up with what we should actually. Use to pay. For other bills. Uh, but having gone through that again and looking through that as an example, in the general fund, investment income, if you look at the month of. January. Was that about a hundred twenty-five thousand? We look at the month of February. It was about a hundred eighty thousand dollars. Why? We didn't magically. Get that much more revenue. Interest rates. And so we're reporting books and I have to try and figure out exactly what we should be doing. The good news is. After revisiting that, I think there's another couple hundred thousand dollars we can help with balancing the budget. To get there for next year. And see how that goes.
So I have a question. Uh. So if you have it going back to your thousand dollars. We're going to get fifty at the end of the year. It's unrealized. It says eleven hundred if you sold. Why wouldn't we sell when just said on the eleven hundred?
Because then you get the eleven hundred dollars and you put it back in and they price out the interest rates of your to reinvest it. At the end of the time period, you're going to get less. Reality is it's not eleven hundred. It's really a thousand seventy or something like that.
But it would still be more than a thousand fifty we get at the end.
It's. It possibly maybe, and sometimes you look at those type of things to sell, but many times it's just. It might be a thousand twenty-five today and we're recognizing some revenue we haven't gotten. Yet. And so we have to weed those out and take a look at them and see what.
So maybe closer to the end, it would make more sense to look at that. Okay, thank you.
But I just want you to realize that. Book earnings on that are not necessarily cash moves. As we go forward. Uh, so. After a half hour, we're through six pages. Hopefully I can move this along real quickly. We'll move on to the general fund tab and go to page or the capital group, capital outlet tab, page eight. These are the. Yeah, these are requested for this upcoming year. I just want to go through them. You'll see them again in each department as we. As we move through the different departments, but I just want to cover them really quickly, answer any questions you may have on these at this point, and then. It'll help us move through the rest of it fairly quickly. Facilities has some uh concrete work that needs to be replaced at Dayton. Uh, juvenile probation for fifty-five thousand. They've got a replacement truck for a custodian and two replacement trucks for facilities crews in here. Information technology. A replacement phone system. So our existing phone system we purchased back in two thousand and twelve. The software is, we updated it, but it's out of end of life. And the phones are end of life, meaning we have to go to a whole new phone system and brandy phones all the way across the county. Uh, we've been trying to limp this one along and try and get it upgraded so it worked. And then still having issues with it because it's got some bugs in it. But we're at the point that we have to replace it. We don't have a choice of the stop function. So it's a hundred and forty thousand. I do want to let you know we got a nice little note. Wednesday, Wednesday, we've got a nice little note Monday. It's going to be a hundred and forty-five thousand now. Because they're increasing the phones by five percent because there's tariffs. Uh. And they anticipate that may go up. As we move forward. And what I'm probably going to do is come back to the board at your next. Is now, because we can buy them at any time, use them with our existing system and then use a hundred thousand to upgrade the. The rest of the system. Um, but that way we don't continue to see the inflation on those funds as we go forward. Because that's. That's been a very steep, when we're looking at five percent and maybe twenty-five percent and about a couple weeks. Um. So I want you to be aware of that. We also have. Two storage attacks network devices. Just think of these as a huge bank of uh hard drive. We have those set up with all of the different applications that we run at the county. Those are end of life and it's time to replace those. So we don't have hard drive failures and lose data. Uh, we do have redundant systems in place, but it's. It's to the time that we need to replace those. They're end of life as well. So that's a hundred and sixty thousand. Replacement truck for IT. District attorney, um, they have two replacement vehicles. I don't know if you ever walked through the parking lot out here and saw the ones that. Um, are missing paint on the hoods. Almost the whole hood is a different color because they sprayed painted over it because it's not. They're old pop cars and they're, they're into life. Um, court services requested new vehicle to go along with an additional person to court services. We're not recommending funding the person. So we're not recommending funding the vehicle. Again. We've communicated with all the department heads. There are no surprises against budget for the departments that are out there. So they know. That we're not going to recommend this, and they understand that. On the sheriff's side, we have seven replacement vehicles. Um. Out of the general fund, we're going to pay for three of them because the vehicle acquisition fund, which. Raffle licenses, business licenses go to fund that. We're not getting enough to cover all the sheriff's vehicles. When I first started, we had enough to cover all the sheriff's vehicles and then so. This, the revenues haven't grown significantly. In number, some business licenses, or something like the sheriff's office has grown over the period. So we're having to fund some of them from other sources. Aviath, I want you to be aware of here is since. Um, the previous sheriff implemented a take-home policy on the vehicles for out of county. We are seeing a significant increase in mileage on the vehicles, and that's part of the reason, in my opinion, we've had to come back. Um, over the last year and ask for seventeen additional vehicles over time. So that's something. I'm not saying we need to do anything immediately about. I just want the board to be aware of. That discussion because we do have a significant number of sheriff's officers. Uh, deputies and sergeants that live outside of the county. The challenge is is. Keeping the staff full would just have against the county. That's a challenge. So. Just so you're aware of that discussion, that's part of the reason why we have this many vehicles. As we move forward it, and they actually need to be a little more, we'll address that as we go through the year. Fairgrounds, they had requested a handful of improvements to the vocational. Uh, building and to put some traffic control cable rails out front where. People end up parking in the fire lane to prevent that. Uh, we've had to tow a number of vehicles. Out of there, but in this budget, we're not recommending those improvements at this time. Park recreation tax or park construction tax. We have the money that we build up there for for parks. You'll have an eye on. I'm interested in that. I don't think it's model. Uh, city of Newington is going to be asking to put some bigger blockboards in there. Really, uh, Jill's or Smith Valley sports that just got redone. So they want some here. So. Uh, there'll be some of those. I know the. There are items for the central line parks that they're working on some projects to currently. Special assessments, these are the court facility assessments. They can only be used for the justice court improvements. We're planning on using these towards the. Uh. The friendly justice court, bringing it in federal grant doesn't cover, and the. Dayton government complex were part of that to help fund the. That project as well. We get down to roads. They have two pieces of equipment that they are requesting to be replaced out of the road improvement fund. They have a loader, uh, they would like a newer one than, I don't know what year theirs is seventies or eighties. I don't know what's doing it. It's not. Large enough and not as reliable as you would like. Two hundred sixty-five thousand for that. They have a truck with dump plow sander combo for a hundred thirty thousand. They're looking at replacing as well. Senior services, they're budgeting uh for grant match. Hopefully they get two vehicles this year through grants. We'll see how that plays out, but we have to put the money in for the match. So we have it when we apply for grants. And then out of the general counter request. We're anticipating built in June of two thousand twenty-six to be two point seven seventy-five million. Since we don't get it till the end of next fiscal year, we don't want to try and spend it when we don't have the cash. So we always. Set that aside and say, we think we're going to get this. We're going to budget to get them, but please don't spend it because we may not get the cash. There have been years where we didn't get built until September. There have been years where that was quite a discussion at Congress because it literally. Takes an act of Congress every time we're supposed to get that funding. So we'll see how that.
You got a question for you?
Yes.
So you come back to, you were talking about paying for stuff out of this cycle, out of this budget. And it's on for next, next budget. Can you pay for like vehicles on this budget cycle? Even though you don't get until the next budget cycle, or does it go into the next budget cycle?
So for accounting purposes, and we're required by state law to follow generally accepted accounting uh principles for. Local governments set forth by. Gatsby or Governmental Accounting Standards Board. We put in our books, not when we order, but when we receive services for goods. So whenever we receive those, a good example will be a year ago, we authorized ten vehicles to purchase with sheriff's office. We. The new fiscal year, the fiscal year ran, so we didn't actually book in a body. Can't pay for them out of this year's cash. Shouldn't get on the mission as they go in the year and get actually received when guns and services.
Even if you paid for them in the year before?
If you paid for them the year before, we would call that prepaid and we would move it, wouldn't hit your expenditure, we put it in the balance sheet. So it just. Sits out there when we read the balance sheet and say, we prepaid some expenses, but it doesn't change your fund balance in any way, shape or form. And the expenditure actually shows up in the profit and loss the next year. I guess for any expense, whether it's that or if it's ordered a phone system or if you've ordered uh or. An example, sheriff's office frequently will. Uh, schedule training in September, August, July, whatever happens to be, but they do it after the final budget's adopted. And even though they may put it on a P card, the registration goes in a year that it gets. The travel action first.
Jeremy Keller.
Right, right.
Um, I have a couple of questions uh. From this page. Um, first one, looking, uh, Mr. Foley, looking at the sheriff's department. Uh, those figures aren't adding up. Are those all the same type of vehicles?
No, they're not. We have some additions and some explorers in there.
Okay, that would explain why some are eighty thousand and some are seventy.
Exactly correct. Yes, sir.
All right. And then um regarding that replacement truck with dump plow sander. Is that a? Is that being ordered now? So we have it for next fall or winter, or is that a dump truck and we're just getting the. Attachments with it?
Uh, it is a truck that we're going to get the attachments in it, and since we don't have the budget this year, just so we don't order it and actually accidentally get it in. Uh, before June thirtieth, we wait until July to order.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
Okay, then I'll move on to our two large capital improvement building projects. We have the Dayton Government Complex. We have two point eight eight million approximately there, which is going to be split part out of Human Services Fund, which. Is the medical indigent fund. And that's a dedicated tax rate can only be used for certain. Purposes, but since we're housing. Uh. Community health nurse and things like that in that building, we can justify using some of that there. Some of it's coming out of capital improvement fund. These are. This is cash we have built up over the years because. As one of the. The counties that gets the least amount of revenue per capita of any of the counties in Nevada. We have taken the stance that we can't, the board has, that we can't afford to pay interest in bond these things because we. We can't afford the interest, so we save up, we earn interest and build up until we can do a project and then we start a project. And so that's what we've been doing on this. We've saved up to do it. We have the. The opposite dental building, which is where the DA and the sheriff's office are in, and the landlord has told me many times, we want you out of this building. We had our insurance canceled because our insurance doesn't like having sheriff substation in our rental. Uh, we're actually having to provide additional insurance and naming them as additional insurance to even stay there. We have. The day justice court that is too small for jury selection. Too small effectively for some of your domestic violence cases or some of your other cases where you literally have people sitting closer. The missionaries are sitting right now that are. On opposite sides of the domestic violence dispute in courtroom, which one of the two cases, and so. It's not feasible. We have a constitutional mandate to provide. Facilities for that, and so that's part of the reason for this, this complex as well. While we're doing that, we're putting the sheriff's office, the D A's office and the court together, all three of them need to move. And then we're also doing human services in that building as well, which. Um, they're paying for a portion of the building over. So. Moving on to the firmly justice uh, complex where, and by the way, the Dayton government complex is currently. Has fifty percent design, it's scheduled in May to be a hundred percent design. And we're going to go out to bid, hopefully avoid the bid in July, and it's going to be somewhere eighteen. Day to speak of construction. Complex. Currently, justice court is in progress right now. Hopefully we'll be done in January, February of two thousand twenty-six, about a year from now, hopefully we'll be in the building. And that's funded a hundred percent currently by federal grants. We may come across expenses. That the federal grant doesn't cover, and so we may have to rob Peter, pay Paul and take something, leave the government complex, the cash without there. To pay for that as we go forward. I'm hoping we don't get to that point, but. It just depends on how that project plays out. Whenever you're expanding existing building. We sometimes come into it surprises and you may end up with more change orders and that type of. You expect to start when you start. And then we also have a portion of public safety sales tax that the board has uh, received approval. To to levy, uh, and that plan for spending that is for. Improvements of the justice complex here in Girington. Our next project that we're getting ready to bring back to the board is expanding the secure parking because. We did the remodel ups. And that's much is that we have the secure parking as well and their staff, so we're looking at expanding that, that's going to be a few hundred thousand dollars. And then the other things in that building, the other needs that we have, we have one Sheldon space. Uh, for inmates that we haven't finished yet. We built it with a significant amount of Sheldon space because we couldn't afford the time to build it, but we needed to build the building. As we were out of wearing our old jail. We're increasing, steadily increasing in our inmate population with the best numbers, and so. For classification purposes alone, that's going to be something that we're more potentially going to use moving forward. So that's where that money is being saved up for again, saving up in cash because we can't afford the interest and then putting those improvements in as well. Those are a couple of projects.
Well, just one comment, I know that. We have increased our, well, not really, because when I looked at the jail, we had ninety-five people. Now we have about eighty to ninety people, so. Over the last twelve, thirteen years, it really hasn't increased much. Now with the revolving door, the courts. And we're going to have to basically. Counter that increase with the people who are just coming in and they're letting go. Um, so I don't know that we're going to look at that big of an increase, although we have some good ideas at the jail to make sure that we. Take care of those increases if we do have them.
Right, and you're absolutely right, they've changed the legislature of the justice system, so. We're not keeping people in jail as long or even at all in some cases. As well as we're used to, however, when I'm looking at the, and you can go to the auto report and open up at the. End of it, I get the report from jail every year on their average inmate population. And their average inmate populations were going by about ten a year over uh, the past three months, and so. If that continues to to do that, then we're going to end up needing additional space. Again, I'm building off their actual figures, whether they gave me the right figures or not, I can't verify that, I just take the word away.
Now, I'm just thinking the first night I worked there, we had ninety-six. In the other facility.
And they had beds all over the floor, you couldn't even walk.
All over the floor, yeah. Okay.
Right. With that being said, any other questions on the capital? And then we'll move on to the next tab. Another new position request. Um, page nine. I just want you to take a look at them. There are a handful of upgrading of positions, there are a handful of new positions requested. The only positions being recommended in the budget as we previously discussed are the. Uh, instrument control technicians for utilities. Part of that is so we can do additional preventative maintenance and trying to keep up with that schedule. And. And take care of the equipment that we have. Any questions on on this? Okay, so then I'm going to move on to. The general fund tab, which we page ten in the document. This is a summary sheet, you can see at a glance at the. General fund, uh, the dark shaded bar is our revenues. On the graph and the checkered one are expenditures. You can see that we are budgeting to spend significantly more than we bring in next year. As this budget was built by approximately five million dollars. Now of that. I'm anticipating and recommending to the board that we use any fund balance to cover significant portion of that. Contingency. Capital outlay. Those in theory, hopefully we can keep to one time expenditure, so our any fund balance that's not going to replenish from year to year necessarily. If we spend it, it goes away. So those are one time expenditures. Um, also. I'm going to recommend to the board that we take about a million dollars. And use it towards ongoing expenditures. I have a a method of, to my madness. We do usually see some vacancy in turn over the year where we have savings. And so that accounts partially for that. Usually we see that. Somewhere between. Five hundred thousand dollars to six hundred thousand dollars, sometimes up to a million dollars. That we see that. The caveat I have this year, because this is going to be a little more aggressive, but I'd rather err on side of not removing positions. And using fund balance just to make sure that we're absolutely needing to remove any positions that we do. And. What we're still in the sheriff's office, as an example. In the sheriff's uh, budget. He's on track to spend everything that he budgeted for the sheriff's office. Plus four hundred thousand for the additional vehicles, four hundred thousand in just off limits. And the jail budget. He's on track to be under three hundred thousand. So overall, when we compare those two, we're still spending more than was budgeted. We're using contingency to do it, but again, the contingency contingency is funded at a long time. Fund balance that's not going to replenish every year. I'm not saying this is a bad thing. Our goal is to make sure that they have fully staffed. That's the reason that we negotiated increases with the sheriff's association. Were higher than the rest of them because we couldn't keep it staffed. We want that to occur. Not a bad thing. But when we get to budget time, we have to realize. Sheriff's not going to be turning money back. Due to vacancy. Like he has been in the past. And so that skews. We can't budget the same way we did in the past. So again, I'm going to be higher than I think we should do because I don't want it. I want to err on the side of us spending a little more in fund dollars because we have a tiny bit there that we can. We can play with. And we have the ability to correct in the gear if we need. So I want the board to realize we're being. Aggressive in this budget. And. Budgets spend more than we. And we'll see where everything plays out with them. Uh, let's see. So that's basically, I've already gone over most of this, other than currently the any fund balances nine percent of expenditures. When you exclude capital outlay. And we recommend it at sixteen point seven percent, which is two months worth of. Of expenditures. The reason we recommend six point seven. Which is two months of expenditures again, is because our revenues, even though we booked them in. For the consolidated tax that we get in in July for a couple million dollars. And the consolidated taxes we get in August for a couple million dollars, between five million between those, and we show those as fund balance. They're not cash in June thirtieth. So you have to have enough cash June thirtieth. You have to have enough fund balance to actually have positive cash, so we can write payable checks. Otherwise, you get into the situation. That some other entities, um, I can think of one in the county this fall's year where they told their employees. You know, we can pay part of your check on salaries, but we don't have the cash to pay all of it. Uh, will you take an island you for a little? We don't want to. Our employees don't want. Any questions on the general funds? Then I'm going to move on to tab one. Which is page seventeen in the PDF document. This is the general support documents for the department. Uh, significant piece on side or retiree health insurance benefits. These are ones when legislature in the early two thousands just told. Want to. In their wisdom, uh, make it so that. Local governments had to allow their retirees to join the state retirement plan, and the counties had to play for their retirement forevermore. Or their health insurance on after they've retired forevermore. They came back in two thousand eight and said, uh, you know, that wasn't a very good idea. We're going to change that, but we have a group of employees during that time period. That are on there and so on that we continue to pay for them. So they're the only retired employees that we pay for, other than. If someone retires from us, they can come back onto the county health plan. And on the county health plan, they get the same premium as a. Way, there's no differentiation cost depending on their age, like we don't want to see on health insurance. So we do subsidize by doing that. Lobbyists, we moved the lobbyist charge and that was some past Mary Walker and uh, border group. To the newly created government affairs departments of. Spot, so you won't see it here unless they move. And then the conservation districts, uh, they're requesting the same thing as in prior years. Any questions? This is where we'll start a little bit faster. Uh, this is the commissioners on page twenty-five for anger. We did back, uh, the public times bills down to ten thousand dollars, hopefully you can get that completely. Many to the travel, I put that in there. Just for a discussion topic for the board, I realize this may or may not be something you're in favor of, and I want the board to be able to have that discussion today. Traditionally, in the past, when we've gotten to the point where we're cutting police, one of the first things that we looked at was uh. Was training and travel to see where we could uh, decrease there. But I realized this decrease would result in. Changes for the commissioners because it's decreasing commissioners from thirty thousand to twelve thousand. And for Andrew from ten thousand to four thousand. Uh, which is a a significant decrease. I want to bring it up. I want to touch on it when we go to balance it, but I don't know if there's any comments in here.
I'll make a comment, uh, just because as we talked earlier, as as you've talked to all the department has. We're at a disadvantage a little bit because he can't talk to us by open meeting law. We don't get this. Pre-conversation, we get this before us, and so we don't get a set forward by. What we're looking at. I kind of was on some stuff, I just wanted to be known. As we evaluate the budget, particularly the commissioner's travel expenses. It's. Critical to recognize the role that Naco has and a lot of this travels Naco. And what is played in what is down in Illinois county. It's our potential to shape what goes on in the future. These, these meetings foster uh, solutions and. Gives us a voice on a national scale, scale, right? And people think we just attend these things. We're not attending these. We're the leaders that go forward and we sit on uh, different committees. Uh, we actually put forward uh, in those steering committees policies, policies that can affect Lyon County. And uh, basically all of our state. Uh. A lot of times. What happens in these, these meetings is we get a heads up of what's coming down. But we can also head off something that could impact our county. We save a lot of money because nothing was done, so, so. It's not a matter of bringing money in, it's stopping some of our policy before it even hits here. So, uh. That away now is in the spotlight. And it's in the spotlight for a couple of reasons, uh, housing, energy development, much of it in county. And this is our community, our legacy, and uh. We have to have a say in shaping our future. Some of the Naco conferences are key to that, that that reasoning. The annual legislative. Conference connects us with policymakers to influence legislation. And apply for our federal grants affecting our residents. The annual conference unites our our leaders nationwide, and that's where we go and shape the policies and direct those agenda. The Western interstate region. Conference offers solutions tailored to fit that are unique to Nevada. And since we have so much public land, it's where we have to have a say. These, all these events strengthen Lyon County, they advance our policies, they uh, foster networks with our states. And then reduces uh. Innovative practices. I feel that the commissioner's travel is not an expense. It's an investment, it's an insurance policy. It's also part of my training, it's part of what I do the best, where I can be the most positive for uh, constituents. And by taking away this opportunity, I think we're, we're shooting ourselves in the foot in in reality. We sit on most uh, steering committees. And we're actually guiding. What comes down, but I, I could go into more detail, but I just, I, I. I want the other commissioners to talk about what they saw out of uh, Naco, I know that uh. When uh, we had the state meeting in Carson. I think I heard positive input on that. And now the state meeting's down in Las Vegas. And do we still want everybody to have that input? I think it's a uh, benefit to the commissioners to. Up and uh, be on top of things. So. I wanted to go back where I was, I was looking at it increasing it just because of the. Of. Of what is like in this instead of Carson, that kind of thing. I think the. Also moving forward and maybe find out what which ones, because I don't even know if the other commissioners want to attend meetings. Because we, we, until we come to this. Spot, we don't know. If uh, maybe on future budgets, we can find out what. You can talk to individual commissioners and see which ones they're kind of interested in. And come up with a. A value at that point instead of just. Ballparking it because I think you get it a little bit more tight because I don't know if everybody wants to attend meetings or. And what their involvement is, or if they feel that they're getting benefit from them. So I know I get an extreme benefit from them. I don't talk to your involvement as much as I do talk to. Uh, county manager and uh, bring, introduce him to other people. Uh, we've got direct connections to the White House. We got new policy changes that are happening right now, and we have to be on top of those, so. I, that's all I feel about.
I also agree with that. It takes a lot of time and effort to get to the position where we can have influence and we've. Done the work to get there and I don't want to lose that.
We have a membership in Naco so that we can represent the county at Naco. Naco can then. Present that information to the other meetings. Um, I'm looking at. This budget where we have to tighten the belt. And if this year we need to tighten it up and reduce our travel as commissioners, then that's what we need to do. Um. I just think that uh. We spend a lot of money on on the travel, um. Reduce it this year, see what happens next year. The governor is stepping in, we've seen several of his letters to try to. Um, help the counties, especially the rural counties, and so I think that we've got him leading the charge on many of these things, and we can certainly talk to Naco. Uh, our representatives in Naco. And make sure that those uh. Things that we feel are important are emphasized in those meetings, and it doesn't require that much travel. Uh, I do believe that DC has been very beneficial financially to our county. And we definitely should make sure that we finance that trip every year, and I believe this will take care of that.
Hi, Commissioner. I um, attended the state. And uh, Naco and and uh. Definitely value in that for me. Uh, learned a lot. Uh, I've also gone to a couple of uh. Uh, Naco train uh, that local, Reno. Um. Lot of value in that, and I see the value. Uh, that Christian Ketter brings back from DC. Uh, and those relationships that he's developed, um, definitely. Valuable for uh, for the county. Um. And I, but I I remember the feeling, you know. Maker in in uh, Vegas this year, um, I mean. I don't have a problem doing that one out out of pocket. Uh, maybe we can meet metal with, with the, uh, budget cut. I, I understand we gotta. Cut back to, to. DC. So whatever travel, um, would be on my, um, ticket, I would, uh. Definitely be willing to give that over.
And I, I will be going to the Rapid City, uh, trip, but I already paid for my. And, uh, just because I'll get something out of it personally. I'll represent the county if I need to, but, um. It just, to me, we've got to cut back. We've got to be just as well.
Um, Chairman Keller, I, um, cuts are tough, um, and I get that. Uh, I would agree, um, with Commissioner Hockaday. Um, we cannot. Not cut some of this stuff. Um, and. I, I believe we're sending two to DC is. I, I know that we've run it, we've butted heads a little bit, but. I, I think we can cut back on that. We'll still have doubt representation, um, and. We have people that want to go. Um, I'm not trying to bump anybody saying, well, I want to be one of the, one or two to go. Um, but I, I think there's room for some cuts in the travel for sure. And I don't know. Is there a zoom option for some of these, uh, conferences such as Vegas?
Not all of them zoom, um, conferences. A lot of these committees require us to be there. It's supposed to be the, uh, steering committees because that's when they, they finalize everything that they want. The people that are actually act, active in. Leadership and, uh. Just participate. They want people that are active. That's why I, I got appointed as far as, uh. Uh, president of NACO has, uh, and on rack. You have to be active, but I think it kind of gets to the point of there are certain things where we. Some of us are getting a little benefit on these trips and some aren't and some can do without. So that's what I meant by if we could have talked to each other once individually, we probably could have came up with a better, uh. And make sure that we get all the benefit we do that from NACO. I agree that we can do a lot of NACO. We can bring that to the board. But you have to also realize a lot of that stuff that is on our state board is because of the participation we do. At the state board, we're bringing back the stuff that we push through, right? At the national level. So it all is hand in hand. So that's, that's what I wanted to bring. Forward is that, uh, I think we could have came up with a better number.
So with the board's permission, I'm going to keep moving forward and we'll revisit this as we're trying to balance the general fund. Any other questions on the commissioner or comments on the commissioners? And we'll move on to. Already started anything where we're making the crazy request from there. There are going to be these on the pages. It requested position to be a creative mob system to admin assistant. Again, we didn't. Do any of the upgraded position plus or new positions in the recommended budget due to. Tell you the, the most popular type of bills I see at the one you're slating right now are ones about elections. And what's about helping trans for some of these? And so we're seeing a, a huge amount of things and who knows where those are all going to play out and we're. But we're having to pay for, uh, the global registration software we have in the past just last.
Mr. Foley, you're breaking up a little bit. I don't know if it's because your mic moved or whatever, but.
Is this better?
A lot better.
Okay, I will try not to eat the mic, but we close enough you can hear me.
Thank you, bud.
Uh huh. Any questions on the clerk treasure department? Or comments? Okay, then we'll move on to tab number four, which will be page forty one. Which is the recorder department. There's very little change here, um, from year to year. You do see that there's a percentage change and that's just because we have a technology fund here that rolls over from year to year. With these funds that roll over because. Uh, technically statute gives the elected official the right to spend that money whenever they want and we don't want to. Limit that by the budget. We budget to spend everything that they have each year, even though they don't traditionally always do that. And so you're going to see that in a few departments as we go along where. We've budgeted to spend everything, even though we know they probably aren't going to. But it gives the department head or the elected official the ability to actually use those funds during. Any questions on this? This tab? If not, we'll move on to tab number five, on page forty five of the documents for Andrew. Which is the assessors, um, assessing office department. And this is fairly, uh, similar from year to year. There's no increase in staffing. Their service supplies. Are almost all funded by technology fees that are in there, which is. A percentage of the real property tax that's assessed out there. The county keeps that and the gets to use that in the assessors office. Any questions here? And we want to tab number six, which is on page fifty, the facilities department. Uh, we did already talk about the capital outlay for Dayton, uh, juvenile probation parks. And then a replacement for three different vehicles as well. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess. That you can replace when vehicles and stuff like that. But with that vehicle that's there, what happens to you? Did we? Do we look at nothing back from that later and salvage whatever auction?
Yeah. So when it's a replacement vehicle, we will either sell that vehicle or rotate it out to. Replace another one. It's a loaner vehicle or something like that, or to another department. And then get rid of the one that they have. So in theory, anything that's a replacement vehicle, eventually one goes. Or it gets sold or scrapped as.
That comes back into the general fund.
Comes back into the general fund for replacement vehicles from the general fund. If it's a road vehicle, we put that back into the road. And sometimes they get behind because they have to get the day to day work and. They sell a bunch of vehicles at one time and then you go for a while and they're just sitting waiting. So they're working through that process.
I just want to know if there's entered the budget and so I said, when it happens.
When it happens. And we do budget a little bit for sales department. On the revenue side. So let's move on to tab number seven. This is human resources department, uh, HR. And so. Budgets fairly similar from year to year. We are seeing more expenses. Sorry, page number fifty nine. We are seeing also the background checks as we're moving forward in the drug testing. So. Sometimes we get lucky when things get tighter and people don't move around and jobs as often. And so sometimes I get down, but. Recently we've been doing that on these checks. And we have to do a certain number of drug tests for our end dots. And special, uh, for people to make sure that we, they've got CDLs and those type of things. Move on to tab number eight. On page sixty three, hopefully department, uh. Very similar from year to year on what we're actually spending. Most of the increases are. Three years it costs a little bit more for, uh. Any questions on this one?
You just have to argue with yourself to get this budget and for this department.
It's ugly, I'm telling you. Sometimes. Yes. We'll move on to tab number nine, which is on page seven. This is the IT department. We already talked about the capital outlet, the phone system, uh. The storage attached devices and vehicle there. You support a number of the, the different softwares or through the different departments. If it's for a single department. We will use the software there, but for like email, hundred percent of the email gets paid here, website. Gets paid here for the county's general website and so on and so forth. So. There are a number of different software programs that run through this one. The, between now and final budget. This may change a little bit because we may come to you to, we're planning on coming to you to try and get the phones earlier so that we don't. Spend more money over time. Any questions on this one? And we'll move on to tab number eleven, which is page seventy three.
You skipped ten.
Did I skip ten? Oh, sorry, ten. Tab number ten, page seventy three. Thank you. Keep me on track. This is the newly created this year government affairs department. Uh, we've moved the lobbyist into it. No budget. We're going to transfer contingency funds in. Usually we do that in June and bring that to the board in June to get a single. But this pays for our government affairs, uh, lobbyist efforts include supporter group possible. Change it down to forty thousand for this next year, which is a significant decrease to what we've been paying for. So they have helped us out in this budget. Yes.
So how's this break out of it? So I'm looking at government affairs. We've got our. Our lobbyist for Washington, but the lot local is brought in house.
Yes.
And it's also tied to emergency management.
Yeah. So what we're doing, and we do this with a number of employees, is we have a salary split between departments. And so a certain number of hours here for lobbyists, a certain amount of hours for government or for the emergency management for both employees in this. This one. So you'll see we're only budgeting in government affairs, half an employee in total here. Even though we have two employees. So the other one and a half.
Thank you.
Move on now to table one. And that will be page seven. This is building. Yes. Here, us, they do incur here a pass through cost where we're paying engineering services to review plans. I have a contract for most of us. Any questions on this tab? We'll move on to tab number twelve, which is on page eighty five, climbing department. Again, similar, we do have a number of pass through costs that we're. For additional. Transfer one to ten properties into title fifteen zoning and start that process to. And try to proactively. Change them instead of waiting till someone actually wants to come do something with their property. But because of the funding, the budget, this is one of the things that, uh, is not. It would be really nice to have, but it's not something that we have to have at this point. And we'll move on to have number thirteen, my page ninety two. This is a maintenance shop. Uh, the cost been increasing significantly over time on the maintenance. We did add a mechanic here over the long, or why we added a mechanic. Vehicles that we're doing. Anytime you have another mechanic come on board. You end up with more repair costs, parts, because that guy's actually working or gal, whenever it is, they're actually working. And we're getting the vehicles back to where they should be on.
Have we caught up on all the maintenance as far as? Is that why we end up with more vehicles if we don't get the maintenance done?
We do. So we're on the, on the oil changes and those type of things. Yes. But there's just a, we have a very, very large volume of. A fleet out there and other things, generators and everything else. And so they are busy all. Doing better, but we're not. We're, we're doing really good on the way to, so if we're kind of like, like they're making progress.
One, that changes and also when they're. That when, when they go into a chase, they're probably not going down a nice road. They're probably going off road and they need, uh, added. Maintenance as soon as they do that, so that we get the alignment and everything else back together. So we're not paying for it in the long run.
Yep. And I know they're, they are working on that. One other thing, the vehicle maintenance slash heavy equipment have been working on because of the. Significant volume of new vehicles that have come in that are patrol vehicles. Uh, our vendor that does the outfit, puts the lights and sirens down, all of the different electronics in. Isn't able to get to northern. Maybe just a little. And so they've started doing some of those, which is saving us cash, but we're paying for some overtime to try and get that. So your work. So you'll see overtime is a little bit higher than it's been in the past, but we're actually saving money by paying.
You're offsetting it with the, doing it in house. Thank you.
Yep. Move on to tab fourteen, which is on page ninety seven.
What's that? I, I'm listening. I didn't, uh, maybe look like I raised my hand. I didn't.
Okay, we're good. Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. Page ninety seven, district attorney department. They've requested a, uh, additional. Positions and an internship program. We haven't included these in the recommended budget. One discussion we did have with. The district attorney is if he has vacant positions. We currently under policy, he could go hire an intern and bring them in for the summer if he has a vacant position because we're. We're not paying that salary out. And so I think that's going to assist at least in this year's budget to. To work with that and next year he has the ability to do that training or whether he has vacant system. He's currently. Uh, has one district attorney position that we haven't been able. And then there, as we discussed, are two replacement vehicles. Any questions here? And we'll move on to tab number fifteen on page one oh six. I should say also the district attorney. Did recently come back and ask if you could increase the salaries of the people in, in the department so that. The salaries of the attorneys are higher than their positions because we have had a number. Qualified applicants that want to come work for Lyon County. That asked for advanced hire. It was justified to advance hires for them to get them to come here. And everything would have been fine with the exception of internal equity, meaning you're bringing in. Outside of experience and you put them in and they're making more than someone who's got eight years' experience in his office currently. Which is a problem. In normal budget years, we would bring that back to the board and say, let's do this. With budget being the way it is, we haven't done this. Um, but that's still something that the board needs to be aware of. That their internal equity salaries are preventing us from.
With that, that's out there for the raises for the elected officials. Would that? Would you be bumping that lower positions up to, okay?
All that does would be bumping the district attorney. Himself.
Who I was going to do is, is, are you bumping people below him to where it increases his? Okay, thank you.
So that's a problem. I don't know how to fix it unless we cut somewhere else in the budget to get him there. But that is an issue for his. And has been for a while. We've changed the salary ranges over the past handful of years. We've brought items to the board. Three or four times, I think, over the past three years. Increase in salary ranges, but we never moved the people in the ranges. And so the salary ranges are appropriate. We have decent salary ranges. But we clean their people because of internal equity because it's fair to hire, making more than dedicated employees who have been like this for years.
So you're moving on to another tab right now?
I had one quick question. Uh, he requested the, the new positions and it, it says that those have not been included. On the breakdown of the salaries, there's one position listed. As vacant deputy district attorney that does have a salary.
Yes, and that's the vacant one we're talking about. But he requested additional work above.
Okay.
What he currently has on.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So even as I was going to move to another tab, it's not thirty. We've been here for an hour and a half. I think it'd be a good time to stretch our legs and. Use the restroom and then come back in, uh.
Let's, let's come back to tab fifteen on page one oh six. Thank you.
Come back at, uh, forty.
Thank you. Josh lawyer, I kind of control for the record. Uh, this is child support, just so everyone's aware. This is funded two thirds by federal grant currently and has been for decades. So most of this is, uh. Is easy because we, on the revenue side, budget for, uh, two thirds of the rest or the expenditures to be reimbursed for us. Any questions here? We'll move on to tab number sixteen, public guardian department. Uh, this is overseeing human services and. Uh, we have one employee that's public guardian and then Shayla gets the distinct pleasure of filling in when that person is not available or has too much workload. So. It's a significant commitment for her. We appreciate her. Um, any questions on this one?
Yeah, there was a few on the last two. There's a couple of bills that are out there or. Did you see any that were looking at that might increase this stuff on our upside?
So on public guardian, I haven't seen any yet. I saw a couple of guardianship ones um. Talking to the judges, it didn't appear like there'd be a significant change for us.
And on the child support there, there was only one that I saw was a. The DMV. Their license away. So I want to take that as a fiscal.
Fiscal impact on that particular bill.
Okay.
Seventeen or tab seventeen on page one fourteen. Which is court services. They did request some additional people. They are. Fairly busy with the pre-trial work that they do. In addition, they're part of that uh. Legislative requirement that we have from. Getting people out of jail more quickly and the bail reform stuff that we talked about earlier. So we're required to do a number of the services they do. There is a request again for a vehicle for this because they requested a new position to go with that, but since that wasn't recommended in the budget. We're not recommending the vehicle. Any questions on this? Okay, then we'll move on to tab number eighteen, page one thirty-five, district court clerks. Notice changes here from year to year. We did have a couple of uh. Uh, we did add a position this last year here. Actually adding. Added a physician for the next department, but moved a court clerk out of here for them. So they're similar. And then move on with tab number nineteen on page one forty-nine. For district courts, again, this is the item that came back in the fall or came in the fall or early winter, perhaps. I think it was fall. Where they added a position to be a uh assistant or senior clerk for the court master. They did uh increase their professional fees. And reduce their attorney costs. Any questions here? What was the reduction here? I mean, I see we do have a reduction in the. In the attorney line item? Yeah. Like you dropped twenty-four thousand on that line one. Right, so that would be the uh. Should have brought my reading glasses. We reduced it by uh, it was budgeted a hundred and forty-five thousand for the current year. We dropped it to eighty thousand for next. But that was a significant change. Part of that was uh the board last year increased the recording fee and. Attorneys at that, and so that helps here, but they're also seeing a decrease of what they've had to pay to. We'll go on to tab number twenty, Walker, the justice court. So this is of the uh three justice courts that we're going to get to. The justice courts, we have not raised their salary for a number of years because. They are an elected official and we were, the board was treating more to the other elected officials that weren't getting salary increases during that time. And so with Bill SB one sixteen being reflected here, we did increase recommended salaries for the JPOs to be the same as the clerk treasurer, assessor. Which is a salary increase. Number twenty-one on page one fifty-one for the firmly justice court. It's a new position, however. After that discussion, we brainstormed together and we're in the middle of bringing agreements back. To the board of commissioners to consolidate the, partially consolidate the municipal court in firmly and the justice court. So that we don't have to spend as much money as we go forward. Um, they had requested reclassification for the bailiff. We didn't uh. Didn't include in the recommended budget any of those things, but we did do that increase for the justice of these salaries I just discussed. Any other questions? And we'll move on to tab number twenty-two. Page one seventy-four. That's the Dayton Justice Court. And nothing significant changed here other than we did increase the salary recommended. Now to tab number twenty-three, it's on page one seventy-nine for juvenile probation. They did request again a uniform allowance to be paid as part of salary. We're currently providing a uniform allowance. What they want the ability to do is have the county pay for their slacks and things like that and. The federal government takes off, you know, eight, twenty percent income taxes on that on their site too. A additional cost for the benefit. Well, Medicare and most things get paid on it. So our recommendation to the board, we've talked to the agents as well, was to. Continue this where we actually just buy the uniform for them and don't put it into their salary. But we can't buy their slacks, those type of things. There are other items other than the uniform itself, shirt. And jacket because, and the other gear that they do, right? The pistol and the the belt. Different things. But if we buy the other ones that you can use and just wear out. Indiscernible from public, like a sheriff's officer's employee, you can tell that's a uniform, right? If you can't tell it's the uniform, we're required, if we buy it for them and give it to them, we're required to put it in their W two wages. Either way, and so it gets taxed. That, so we're recommending not. Uh, the JPO chief and his officers would love to have it in the salaries. I I recommend.
So it's just the slacks?
Those type of things. They they want to have a. They call it a uniform, meaning they want everyone to look the same. However, that doesn't qualify under IRS regulations as a court of work uniform to be untaxable. They did that for in addition to the vehicle fleet. They're not asking to have the county buy a new vehicle. What they're asking for is when one rotates out of the sheriff's office, assuming we have some of them actually make it that far that we rotated out. They're asking for that not. Have it in their departments to help with uh their secretarial staff traveling between. We'll go on to tab number twenty-four, which is page one eighty-nine for the public defender. This is uh.
You got a question on, you just, I was just thinking about it. When we have those. Those vehicles that aren't being used per service and they can still be used for other things. Yeah, has any thought gone into using those to for the employees that are leaving the county? So that's the vehicle they take?
Right, so no, and the reason for that is because um. Normally those aren't. We take the fitting off and radios out and all of those different things when we do that. And so we have a. We have a loaner fleet that they can use when they go to the yard, but the cost to have those additional vehicles. Up there, we'd actually be adding vehicles to the fleet to have that.
Everyone makes sense on the sheriff's department, but do we have anybody else that goes out?
The only ones that uh go out of county with the county vehicles would be sheriff's offices. None of the rest of these are offerings to.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know that.
Although there was a request from the district attorney to be able to provide take home vehicles, that isn't something that the policy has changed to accommodate. And if we do that for some of those, that's another taxable benefit. They have to keep track of mileage and they have to put that into their W two. Public defender is, once we reach our cap amount, which increases every year. The state currently is reimbursed for the cost. So on the revenue side, we do have state reimburse. Seven contracted public defenders. And we have other ones that fill in where a case comes up and they just contact people off the list. Is requiring us. Have up to twelve. Pay from in reality, we're having a hard time finding. And the current ones, we believe that, you've seen the letters, I think, we believe that that. The way that they're calculating the number of attorneys should be revisited, even though we've sent a letter to the Dits Board. I don't believe they have agendaized or. Consider any of that discussion currently. We'll move on to tab number twenty-five. Dispatch, page one ninety-one. And just so you, we still have a lieutenant position in there. We have. The dispatch supervisor position. There's. Giving people signs of a qualified. We'll move on to tab number twenty-six, animal services department, page one ninety-six. This one, we're seeing significantly higher spay and neuter costs. We're getting. We have literally dozens of of dogs on the waitlist for people that want to send them. They don't want their pets anymore. And so it's come in, we get more spayed and neutered, and this we're opting them out. We're required to have them spayed and neutered. So there. There are significant costs and they have a lot more animals now that we've, we have a lot larger shelter, but there's just. Ever since COVID, there's been a significantly increased demand for this service.
So it is funded and with their. Uh, shelter. I know they were talking about it and would that decrease this?
Potentially. I haven't heard what progress they've actually made fiscally on funding something like that, but I know there's worry discussions, but I have. We'll go on to tab number twenty-seven on page two oh one, the sheriff's. Sheriff's budget. There was a request for six new deputy positions, like all the rest of the additional positions. Wasn't configured in the recommended budget. Devices, we have. They call them life scan machines where they take fingerprint prints. Those are out at end of life, and so we have to replace them all this next year. Ultimately, eight, seven thousand dollars to do that. I am considering that a one-time cost and recommending part of what we're funding out of fund balance. They did request thirty thousand dollars for tracking. Tracking software, managing resources software. It's a really impressive software uh that the sheriff would like to implement. It actually shows where the the incident or that, the different uh. Responses have been, shows where the vehicles are live. I'm sure a lot of other bells and whistles, but allows them to. Tailor their their patrols to certain areas where you see more, more of the activity that they need to be um. Working on. But it wasn't included in the recommended budget at this point, just due to. There was also a software for redaction of public uh records and the records management that also was. He was working with the city firmly and probably still is to see if he can get in, if they're interested in providing. Funding for that, uh, the first software I mentioned, so we'll see how that plays out.
That's not for just for redaction?
Second one. The first one I was talking about isn't like he's working with the city. It's not just for redaction, it also tracks the records requests. Um, you have put each records request when it comes in, so you have a tracking. Other than, potentially, I mean, there is that. You have to do a bit of redaction and AI sometimes. And it would have been injury play, I wish. Those are a lot more expensive.
Yep, it would make sense that then they can use it for everything, so.
Capital outlay, again, we talked about this, the three replacement vehicles out of this, and then the four replacements will be other, other four. Any questions here? Move on to tab number twenty-eight. On page two eleven, emergency management department. We do have some federal funding uh for this. Thousand dollars that helps cover some salaries and benefits for uh these two positions. We also put through a number of pass-throughs of ARPAT funds over the years for ambulances and. Burnley's uh new building that they did, that the Boys and Girls Club is going to be utilizing.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Just being a part of some of the. Uh, I don't want to necessarily call them negotiations, but. Um, I just want. Um, it's not a hundred percent that the Boys and Girls Club and the city are going to come together on terms. So. I just want to throw that out there that that's very much in the works.
Fascinating. Okay, thank you for that information. Okay. Any questions or comments on the emergency management side? We'll move on to tab number twenty-nine, the jail. The sheriff did request uh. Control room operator position, their control room supervisor. Again, like all other additional requests this year, it wasn't included in the recommended budget. There are a few special line items, like I talked about previously, where you get jail phone revenues that are. And commissary revenues that are under the the sheriff's jurisdiction to spend, so we budget to spend all of those each year, even though he may not. During the year spend all of the ability to. Any questions here? And you will see the number of employees from budget to budget vary between the sheriffs. In the jail, those two different budgets, just because. He may move someone into the jail for a while and then move them to patrol later. So sometimes we end up with one more here, one less there, vice versa. As we go, and that's what we're seeing here, even though there's no additional positions there. Move on to tab number thirty on page two twenty-one for search and rescue. Not a significant difference in budget there. Any questions? And we'll move on to tab number thirty-one. On page two twenty-four, Lying County Cemeteries Department. Very similar from year to year. The reason the current year is a little more expensive is because at Dressler Park, they went and did some uh. Did some work on the well and most I, I think it was the well this year. That they did some work on. We're on to tab number thirty-two on page two twenty-seven, consumer health. This is a pass-through to the state. They take care of those costs which uh where they come out and do inspections of. Restaurants and those type of things. Any questions here? And we'll go on to page thirty-three on page, or tab thirty-three on page two twenty-nine for public health. This is uh the public health officer that we have, a contractor we have with uh Dr. Titus. And we'll move on to tab number thirty-four, page two thirty-one for child protective services. This is a contract. This is provided by the state and we pay them to provide those services. Just so you're aware, there are a number of these that we put in placeholders for dollar amounts. This would be one of them. There are a number of them that I will cover. While we're balancing the general fund budget, but. We didn't have the, anything from the state because the governor's budget's a little later this year. Um, as they're working through, so this one's going to go up a little over ninety thousand for what we have here. So there are some spots where we're going, as we're balancing. We're going to create a bigger hole. There's going to be spots where we're um saving money and I'll go over all of those uh in just a minute or two. We'll move on to tab number thirty-five on page two thirty-three. The library department. They were requesting to upgrade a library technician position. That wasn't included in the recommended budget, um, just like any other upgrade. Any questions on this budget? Okay. And then we'll move on to tab number thirty-six, page two thirty-nine for the fairgrounds. There was a significant change here as they were requesting for those capital projects. We already talked about those aren't in the re- recommended budget. Go on to tab number thirty-seven. Page two forty-four, the park and rec department. So parks, there is uh. Nothing significant from year to year on this one. nothing significant from year to year on this one currently. Any questions? Happy to answer it. We did talk about putting in those remote device or the devices that would do the lawn mowings electronically and those sorts of things. Uh, we've chosen not to move forward with those at this point, bring them to the board for consideration. Just at this point, we'll see how that goes, mostly due to vandalism concerns.
I'm, we're more interested in cameras or network of getting within a thing that protect our investments.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so that is the final fund. Do we have any questions before we work on balancing?
I noticed, like you touched on now with the sheriffs, uh got some employees that are, you know, with the parks department at one, on part of the budget, and then they're moved to cemetery or with the sheriffs. Does that affect how they're classified for like workers comp? And is that, is that not even a negligible?
So that, that's a possibility, um, if you were between the two different classifications on workers comp that we have are are sworn officers and everybody else. So currently, that doesn't cause a city if they're working between any of the different offices, if they work at all as a sworn officer. They're paid as a sworn officer.
All the, the whole topic, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So if we can take another short break, what I'd like to do is print out the most recent, recent version of a balancing spreadsheet that I'm going to have the board do, and I'll send it to Andrew so he can pull it up on the screen. Uh, let's just say five minutes, that's good.
I'm going to recess, it's eleven oh two right now, come back at eleven oh eight. Hey, come back from recess and we can do is the, I can vote for commissioners.
Josh Foyle, Lang County Conf for the record, so I'm going to go down some of these changes, I'll go through one by one through the changes and some recommendations. These are discussion topics only, if you agree with, we can move forward with some of these, if you want some other options, I can provide some additional options, we can have discussions as we go forward. The first two things I want to talk about are the governor's budget, we received uh, their most recent figures on youth parole services, so it's going to increase the budget for the nineteen thousand five hundred sixty one dollars. Child protective services, as I told you, uh, is going up ninety five thousand one hundred and thirty eight dollars, so I'd like to make those changes in the tentative budget. Now, the sheriff, as far as additional savings or revenues that we've received, the sheriff did receive a grant increase on the SRO school resource officer from the school district, starting in July. That contract is working its way to your board, so you'll be considering it soon. So he did bring in additional money that significantly helps in balancing the budget. In addition to that, the amount of the Washoe County forensic lab in his budget is, when they got the actual figures, it's savings of twenty two thousand eight hundred. We can read the budget by that amount. We've previously talked about the building permit revenues, I think we can increase, and hopefully, everything works out in date, because that's what we created to come by two hundred thousand investment, I think we can increase by two hundred thousand at this point, we'll see how interest rates go, but that would be my recommendation.
The interest rates, I know have dropped like five point five down to two, two point five on CD.
So we're getting, we're getting, depending on which investments we're doing, we're getting somewhere between four and five. Seeing interest rates, they have going down, they're forecasting, depends on forecasts out there, talk about them going down another half percentage percentage point this next year. But we're eight, we're also seeing decreases across the board for interest rates.
Excited, I'm going to go ahead and meet you if you uh, need to speak, if you could raise your hand or something.
You bet, I don't.
Okay, so consumer health. This is one of those passages from the state, we did get additional numbers from the, from the state on those, so we're going to actually be able to decrease that by nine hundred and thirty one dollars. Not a lot, but every little bit helps as we go, so trying to, trying to get us as far as we go. The library voluntarily came in and said that they would reduce their books and publications uh, down to eighty thousand from ninety thousand, so there's ten thousand dollar savings that they've uh, brought up forward. Health insurance, if we uh, at the five percent level, as we got the rates and looked at them yesterday, we believe we're going to be able to save eighty two thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars uh, from what was in the budget originally, as we go across the general fund departments. Vision insurance, we're coming in at a zero increase, so that'd be eight hundred and forty six dollars savings. Dental, zero increase at seven thousand twenty seven dollar or decrease. Life insurance, one thousand one hundred and forty nine for zero. Just so you know, we sat down with our insurance broker yesterday, one o'clock, Andrew and I and Colleen Hunter Break, our HR director, went through options to decrease the plan. We were looking at the first option, which didn't save us a significant amount, was increasing the deductible by a thousand dollars. Uh, some of the family deductibles by significantly more, the next one was a significant increase, I think it was like twenty five hundred dollar increase in deductible. Oh, it's three thousand, three thousand. Um, you can tell I've had a lot of numbers flying around my brain lately, so. Yeah, so we looked at those, and at this point, we don't believe that that's that's worth the decrease, because it's a significant impact to the employees, and so we're recommending we do, do the health insurance as they exist in plan, we have renewal. So then, at that point, we ran out of other options and we started looking at positions, the first positions that we looked at, and we've talked to all the department heads on this, and we've talked to department heads about a lot of positions that aren't included on what's in front of you as well, but the sheriff has an office assistant that's currently vacant. We prefer to impact positions where they, that are vacant, so we don't impact a person in the position. So that's a, a savings of eighty thousand three hundred and two dollars. Senior parks maintenance workers and other vacant position. We're recommending uh, that that not be included in the budget, and that would be a savings of ninety six thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. That particular one, we did go in and increase the, we had more time on this one, we did go in and increase the services supplies contract services by thirty thousand, because when we hired that employee, we stopped contracting workout in the friendly area to do the lawns and all the different maintenance, those type of things up there, so uh, we still have to get the work done. And we had decreased to do it, so we're going to have savings just by not as much, but we'd already factor that into the binder that you had, so you're, it's already there. So we will see a true ninety six thousand dollars from what's in the binder. We have currently four vacant dispatcher positions, um, talked to the sheriff and we're recommending a uh, they, one vacant dispatcher position currently, which would be a savings of ninety six thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. We're done with the vacant positions. Still trying to balance the budget, so then we put on a custodial position, we added one in July. We're recommending eliminating a custodial position at this point. Seventy four thousand three hundred and three dollars. Unfortunately, the work doesn't go away when the position goes away, so what we're looking at is increasing this the budget of fifteen thousand to be able to contract some of the workout that we were doing with that position. And to pay for additional overtime when a custodian is gone, which is what this person uh, was also, or the additional position was doing. So I show a fifteen thousand dollar cost by eliminating that position as well. Move on to the recorder office assistant in the recorder's office. And this is actually uh, three quarters of the position. What we have in the recorder's office is in August, we have one of the employees retiring. Has notified us, is on the early retirement program with us. And when that employee retires, they usually will get accrued vacations and sick leave, they'll get paid out that, so I factored through the end of September, it goes salaries, that's why I'm doing two thirds of this. But we would eliminate a position in the recorder's office, that would be recommended to the board. That leaves them with three people, that's not enough critical staffing to do. When someone's sick, someone's on vacation, someone's at lunch, we have to have that office open uh, for forty hours a week, there's no ends of the guts incident statute. So we spoke to community development and we asked community development if one of their employees could be cross-trained and we could split between the two offices and employee that we go over and fill in during sick leave and vacation, those type of things, so we did have coverage as mandated. Community development would possibly get a little farther behind on projects when they were sharing an employee. But it gets us there without impacting that person in the position. And so that's the recommendation, both department heads were agreeable to that. And so that's savings of sixty thousand eight hundred and seventy three for the budget, it's actually um, a little over eighty thousand dollars of savings in total, but since we have a partial year, that's how much we can actually save for the year. That gets us, we're trying to cut approximately nine hundred thousand dollars out of the budget. Or balance about nine hundred thousand dollars, that gets us within twenty six thousand six hundred and twenty eight dollars. I didn't balance this all the way, because I didn't know what discussions the board might have that would change the numbers that were in here. Bringing up the travel discussion as well and those type of things. Um, so I do have some other options for the board, if you want to go farther than that, we can probably be close in that range and just leave it at that if you want to. Or if you have, you're like, Josh, I don't think this is a good idea, we should keep this position and give us some other options, we can have those discussions as well.
I think you've looked at everything you can, I appreciate you going through every item, and you know, I'm happy with what you have here.
Chairman Keller, uh, Commissioner Jacobson here, um. Um, Mr. Foley, I know that staff morale and mission accomplished go hand in hand. You obviously, with some of these proposed cuts, if you will, or not filling vacancies, which is basically a cut. You worry about staff grumbling about working more for less or whatever. How, how do, how does the county handle that regarding um morale issues, I guess, and that may be not what I'm getting at, how do we without saying, well, your association opted for the three percent as opposed to fill in these positions, what's the balancing act, our department heads will have to have on that, and then I would just um encourage uh, the county and the department heads to make sure that they point the finger at the county commissioners and not the department heads to help them out with this, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson, I, I really appreciate that, because that's a valid, valid concern, you have the employees that are left, that are picking up the pieces. Good people.
So I want to go back to travel, we talked about travel before. And uh, the sheriff, everybody understands how it works with National Mako. It works on a year timeframe, it doesn't coincide with our budget timeframe, right? But the way it works is you start out with RER, which is Western Interstate Region. Well, actually, it starts off with our young committees, our policy steering committees. When we're going to come with consensus of how we move forward into the RER. In rules where we start making public plans and which is a big thing of Lang County. That process moving into annual, which is when we have our elections, also uh, appoint people to different committees. Also, that is where our first part of our resolutions start. So we, we go through the resolutions, like uh Danny and me both sponsored ones for uh, public lands. And uh, basically dealing with electrical stuff up there. Then it goes to legislative committees, and that's where we finalize it and, and policy for, for the next year at the national level, and all these are in person, so for the other board members that don't know how it works, it's kind of like there might be, there's three thousand counties out there, over three thousand. Right, and a, and a steering committee, there might be three hundred. But when you actually go to these meetings, you're down to twenty to forty. I mean, county actually makes, is, is promoting the policy, they got a strong voice. And that's important to keep that going forward, and that's why I was stating earlier. So it's not like we can pick one. Eliminate that, because the, the one that sounds the best is, is the federal. But it's, you have to go through all the rest of them, get to the federal to get a good result, is what I'm trying to say. So I want to figure out how we can get to what the ones that we're committed to, I know that I'm committed to the RER, the legislative. I didn't mention RAP, but that's at the end, that's when the new uh, president comes in, and that sets the whole uh, agenda for the next year, and that's where we'll have our personal contacts and set that agenda. So I want to see how we can get to where I can attend those meetings and go to Las Vegas, I know Commissioner Hendricks is um I'm committed to three of those. We're, we're on the legislative. So listening to everybody else up there, willing to get rid of the others, I don't even know how we go and get that solved. And I don't know what that cost is, I don't know anything else, I just know it's the meetings that I have to attend.
Andrew Haskin, Lang County manager, so um we, I, I believe for each trip, per person, we've been budgeting about thirty five hundred dollars a person. Um, that covers airfare, hotels, and um and meals, so now um registration comes out of the training budget for um for the board, so that's separate, that's a separate line item for each of these events, so we're looking at about thirty five hundred dollars per to, to attend. Now then, that's for the national ones, uh, the state one, that just, that one just varies on where it is. Vegas is going to be a little more expensive than, say, last year's in Carson. Just because you've got hotel room and travel to get there.
Well, I don't know how this process works, but I if it brings it back to where I was, that's where I need to be, so.
So, what I would propose to the board at this time is, I do have a couple more options, that would be the next ones up for positions. Uh, one of them would be a, a part-time library assistant position. Um, that's forty one thousand six hundred and twenty eight dollars, that would give you to worry about balance. Uh, the other one that's similar is a, one of the vacant dispatcher positions, because we have some vacant right now. That's a ninety six thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars.
Did I, did I misunderstand something, uh, Commissioner, our Chair Keller, um, did I miss something? I thought we were going to revisit this when we had hard numbers in front of us, or is this something we're going to revisit right now?
I think that's what we're revisiting now for tentative budget, these, these are the numbers that we're looking at. To bring us to a tentative balanced budget.
Well, I mean, I guess um, throwing these ideas out, um, but it's a library staff there to under, to hear that they may be getting cut more than we're told, or I guess, I guess I was under the impression that we were going to maybe tackle this at the final, but so we're doing it right now, I get that, all right, I'm just clarifying, I thought I misunderstood, I misunderstood what was said earlier.
Okay, now what? To get to that point, we're, we're going to get the the impact. I mean, uh, from what we do at National, actually, I think is going to bring in a lot of revenue, but it's all around grants, it's not part of this budget, that type of thing that we do. Um, so I don't know where. Um, so I don't know where. You mentioned the two. I don't know which of those two, I saw the salary difference, but I don't know what the impact is. In other words, I don't know if we don't have that dispatcher. Yeah, how much is that going to impact us for that position that isn't, is that a position that doesn't fill?
It's currently not filled, but I believe it's planned to be filled later this month. They're in the middle of filling those positions.
Okay, what about the other one? How's that?
In my personal opinion is we do not lose workers. Or make workers work more hours because we believe we have to travel. When in fact, DC brings a lot of millions of dollars in. But honestly, I can't think of anything, uh, that we do. In any of these things. And if National Association of Counties want you there, they'll pay for it. We do pay our dues. Uh, Nevada Association of Counties has things that we input into, they can work on it. And move forward with those ideas. I just can't see where we are going to throw somebody out of a job. To let us travel. I'm sorry.
We could do it out of contingency, um, when you go to. I recommend we don't adjust contingency. What I would recommend if you choose to go that direction is partway through next year. Is authorized contingency, but for those as you go throughout the year, the challenge with that approach is. It depends on what the revenues do during the year, part of your buffer for the year. If the revenues aren't there is that contingency. So it's a. It's a double edged sword. Yes, you can do it. If you do it, that's how we recommend addressing.
As we're looking at difference of the budget, uh, roughly around eighteen to twenty thousand dollars. Of what the figures you just gave me, and I don't know what we get. Because as we move through the year, it seems like we are doing a lot of eighteen to twenty thousand dollar contingency stuff and I. The impact that Naco, the trips we make. Are somewhat bigger than some of the stuff that we fund, eighteen and twenty thousand dollars. So.
I, I don't want to cut more positions.
Yeah, I don't want to be in the mood to cut positions. I think we've worked through that. That's why I wish we went through this before, but I don't want to give up. What we've accomplished and what we're going to gain by continuing the process. And so. I just got to get there. I don't know. It's moving of, it's today, right? I want to get there. I just don't know how to get there, but if I, if we have to go contingency, I'd, I'd rather do that than. Purchase some office equipment or whatever we have down the road. I mean, or can we use the sale of those vehicles to. Replenish back into this. I don't know how to get there.
The sale of vehicle, I, I don't know either. My recommendations would be either. Go one by one from contingency next year, keeping in mind where we're at with that. Or number two, look at reducing, um, reducing this. The departments over the, the great recession significantly reduce their budgets to where it was down to the bone and sometimes past that. We've not added significantly back to the budgets in any department since then. So when we get down to it and I go to the department heads, I'm like, listen. What position would you lose? How can we get there without losing positions? What can you cut? We've gone through that process over me, so. Some pieces of equipment in theory, we could not buy a coffee machine here or there, but that costs you more over time. Because you.
Not to say this, you're going to the. These meetings is going to cost us over time too.
No question, no question.
What if I piggyback on, uh, Commissioner Jacobson? And we approve what you recommended today. And we work out the additional cost if we have additional money. In the future, when we have a more solid handle. Um, and I wouldn't, that would be my motion is to go ahead and, and, uh, take what you've presented. And then. Actually go through this at a later date.
So I can bring up, I realize that's motion on the floor. I don't do one second before.
I still don't have a discussion before we move on, um. We have, we have it set up for twelve thousand right now, right?
For.
For travel.
For travel.
Yes.
Yes.
So I'm trying to think of what's for.
So we have.
I want to move it up to where we can, yeah, we can go to two meetings without going revisiting. So we can attend two meetings before, because we got annual coming up, right? When this budget and then, uh.
That was budgeted for last year's, wasn't it?
So just so you're aware, what I traditionally consider first on those budgets are the commissioner. Travel reimbursements coming to all the various meetings that they require to go to. For coming to a commissioner meeting. So there's a bit of money there for that.
And I'll put in for that, uh.
But some people do. It seems like it's.
I don't care what people put in for it, but how much has I been, you know, what was last year's?
Seems like it's twenty-eight, six to eight thousand dollars.
That, that sounds about right. I'd have to go and look it up.
We got to figure out. To get there because right now we can't even send one, uh, two people to Washington DC at six thousand. Let alone attend any of the meetings beforehand, so.
Chairman Keller, how many did, um, Josh, how many did we send to Washington DC last year?
Two commissioners and, and Andrew's on his budget. So two commissioners and Andrew, he didn't hear him.
And so my, my second travel budget, which I've reduced by six thousand.
Right. So. Are we looking at sending one commissioner and Andrew to Washington DC or is this something we've got to send three? Cause I mean, I, I hear while we sat in on, while we sat in on, and when I hear we is like, is. I, I know you, different ears, different ideas. But when we're looking to cut, see there, and I, I'll just cut to the chase. The reason I want to postpone this is I want public to know that we're looking at increasing our travel. So that we get public input for full transparency. We do it today. It looks like we, we, we did this. Uh, kind of hush, hush. And I don't like that. So I would rather push this decision on staff travel off so that the public has an opportunity to weigh in. That's my biggest beef with doing it today.
So, um, like I said, it really came to us today. So, uh, I wish it would have came to us beforehand. So we could have been one of the discussion. I do look at, uh. When, when we say we sat in on meetings, we. When I come back, I talk to the county manager a lot about what I've done and see our department heads. Of the information that I've gathered so that they can move forward because they actually goes to them. But as far as Commissioner Hendricks and me, we don't attend the same things. She says she goes to hers, I go to mine. We're in the same, uh, place. We're attending the same stuff and all. I'd like to just, like, at least get two, two meetings in, out of our contingency right now.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager. So. Just so I kind of understand, understand the schedule of Naco meetings for next year, what, what does that look like, uh? I know that the, the national conference is in July, right? Is there one between that and, uh, um, legislative conference and?
No. Well, yes, there's my, uh, rack, that is supporting. So that's, yes, in December. And then you come back into the new year, which would be under a new president. So actually it would be. That's why if we can get, uh. The two, so that we can at least attend the annual one coming up, which is the first of the budget. And then the legislative that would end us up the year. I didn't think about RAC. I just like the, I don't want to slow down the process, see where we're at when we get to where we are. But right now to balance the budget, I just want to make sure that we can attend. The first ones.
Um, Chair Keller, I just.
Yes, Bob.
Um, I just find it hard to believe that. This day and age, some of those steering committees and whatnot can't be attended by Zoom. That, I'm struggling with that. Chair Keller, I want, I, I believe in travel. I traveled as a principal and got a lot out of conferences. I get it. I get it. I get it. I'm not in on sending a quorum to any meeting, to any conference, to be honest with you, except for maybe the state Naco. Because it's the state Naco, but. I just find it difficult to believe that. Where, that we're, since hearing, we're not the only county struggling with money, and I'm sure we're not nationwide, the only county. How some of this Naco business can't be covered during Zoom, why we have to be in the meeting in person when, when there's Zoom available. I'm, I struggle with that. And Naco just up their dues. So part of the upping the dues could be to, uh, including. Um, Zooms so that counties can save money on what they charged us extra.
Well, I know that this just happened today, so, um, you know, if I knew this was going to be, uh. Well, I can prevent it better. I would probably bring in the national and, uh, local. So we can, uh, go through the process and not me just trying to explain it. Uh, one thing you, you collect on the zones, we. I, I need like four meetings every month. What is. Will between, we are, uh.
You're breaking up big time, Com, uh, Chair Keller. I can't understand.
So we're putting all these. By, uh, whether, uh, spend colors are all done by Zoom. And voting, this is where we actually vote and what we want to push forward. And that's where we, uh, that's where I was trying to get is out of the three thousand counties. Very few people to go there and one, it's not only just me and Tim, but it's the connections we have and the people that we can bring to push. Running for line county. So that's where we. The, I, I wish I'd bought the resolutions that we passed and. How the backing came and how that's going to affect us on the national level and. Federal lines as far as energy, uh, that one would happen if we weren't there. So.
You're break, you're breaking up Scott. I can't, I can't hardly hear, but I, I, what I heard is you and Tammy and how many did you say twenty-some in this room? Did you say there's twenty-some in that room narrowed down from the three thousand, whatever counties?
So like the final one is like fifty for especially public lands, it's like fifty, uh.
We have two of the fifty from Lion County nationwide.
One, that's our committee, one. Mine's in, uh, law and court's on rural affairs. So that's a different committee. So, so on my committee, it drops down to like thirty from Russell, the agriculture and rural affairs, depending on where you're at. We have even a bigger voice. Because there's usually about five from each state, but the connections I have with those states, I can usually pull about. Oh, I can pull over half the room easy. And that, that's where we use, that's just not me. And so I'm just telling you, it's the connections we've made over the years and that's how we influence them. There's a lot of, uh, there's so much in common that we have with the different, uh, groups. It's just kind of like right now I'm down at the state legislature talking. About, um. The, they're wanting to bring, you know, they're bringing. Uh, contractors from California to work in rural areas because we don't have enough or whatever. And I talked to Brian and Brian goes, wait a second, we just burned down a couple of years ago. We did the same thing. Here's the problems we have. So then we bring that to our state legislature. It's a whole network of stuff. I'm not trying to say that. It's not like you attend a class. It's nothing like that. It's, it's much more than that. And, and, and benefit is a, a lot more value than eighteen thousand or twenty thousands. Uh, the first million you bring back is a lot more than that. So. I'm, I'm just trying not to stop the chain of what we're trying to accomplish as a county unit. Took forever to get a lobbyist. Got run back, uh, twenty-five percent. But we still learn the same workforce, but we, that's the connection we have. So I'm trying to figure out how to, how to keep Ryan County at, at the most knowledge. And I understand that we've got budget cuts and everything else, but I'm looking at. Is there, is there something down the road that we're, I don't want to buy. Coffee machine if it, if it means that we, us on, uh, getting legislation through that, to access on open areas. So.
Right on. Thank you.
To get there.
But we also have to realize that Nevada Association of Counties and your participant net from the commission. That you are there and they are having these different committees that you want to be involved in. And are doing that for Nevada. Therefore, Naco, Nevada Association of Counties should be paying for that. For the state.
That, that's.
Lion County should not pay for us to. Represent everybody when you're representing Nevada Association of Counties. So that's my concern. Um, plus you're doing these different things as a member of Nevada Association of Counties.
Like to. Well, we don't represent that Association of Counties at national. We represent Lion County. There's a lot of people that are, um. I'm a gardener from Douglas, since I'm, uh, rural affairs, same as I do. He just isn't as active as I am in it. Every county, that's, that's what it forward. There's other counties in, in, uh, Nevada that sit on, uh, Commissioner Hendricks. We don't represent, that is the only thing that I, I represent Nevada on is. I will say RAC, but I have an individual on RAC. I'm the only one who own record from the state of Nevada. That's a co-chair. Not co-chair, uh, vice chair. So it, it's still, it's all Lion County. I say it has. It's not national, national is not an extension of Nevada Nick. That makes any sense. I'd be okay with, uh, if we just, we have a little to take out of contingency, which I don't think so a lot compared to the twelve thousand, just to get us to the. Two trips. That way we can at least finish out the calendar year. And we'll see where we end up. That gives us our Washington DC trip and our annual one.
We estimate thirty-five hundred dollars. Per trip. And if we went to thirteen thousand five, that would give us four trips that we estimate. So. Right now, that's as much as I would even consider is going up fifteen hundred dollars to make sure that we can cover four trips. And that we get down to the point where you have one commissioner go. Not like DC commissioner and we've got, uh, county manager. And that comes out of his budget because he's got four thousand. So we have the two people going rather than three. The rest of these trips we can work on. And when we get to that point as to who's going to go and who isn't. Uh, I also know that Commissioner Gardner is paying his way to Rapid City. Um, for the war, um. Cause I talked to him since I'm paying my way, he's paying his way, um. Douglas County is looking at possibly paying for his, um. Four hundred and seventy-five dollars registration fee, but, um. Sometimes, you know, if we want to go to these things and, and include ourselves in the business. Of, uh, county. We've got to just pay for it ourselves.
Looks like our contingency is in budget right now.
Would be one million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, which is a three percent allowed destination. Of expenditures. That's going to change slightly as we make the cuts. The other cuts that we've discussed, that number goes down because it's three percent of. Of whatever we actually budget. So every time we reduce the budget, that reduces the amount of contingency we can actually budget for.
We, we want to, I can make a motion that we, we look at fourteen thousand, I should say, not thirteen-five, but fourteen would give us four trips. We, we wanted to do that. Of course, that's going to put us at. Twenty-eight thousand. Six twenty-eight in the whole. But. You know? Give us a little more flexibility and, and then we should look at. The budget. Later downstream. To see whether or not we're going to be better off. Or worse off.
With that being said, well. This is a tentative budget and as we move forward, things change. And so I, I'm not trying to put any, everything into, trying to get as close as possible for what we need. But, uh, I agree with you. As we come down. Mr. Foley is going to have to come to the person, tell us the bad news or good news, one or the other. And so we'll, we'll have to make adjustments there. I just want to make the commitment to get at least what we've been paying for. To at least finish out the year of what we're trying to accomplish. So did you, was on motion?
I, I'd like to make a motion, yes. Keep trying anyway. That we do increase the travel budget to fourteen. Which allows us four trips for commissioners during the year. We're not looking at. Slicing and dicing people out of their jobs or their time that they. Are going to be working extra. So my motion would be to, to increase that to fourteen. Uh, with, uh, later on in the year.
I'll second that. People have a motion or second. Brad, I didn't hear from you.
I know, I'm saying nay.
It's further one in that. That motion.
So we have the general fund direction. Do you want me to proceed on with the other funds now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I've noted that and we'll move forward on the other funds. So if you would go to the variance tab. I'm going to go through these fairly quickly unless you have questions or comments. We'll be on page two fifty-one for annual. Our construction tax is the first fund. We budget to spend everything that we have available, even if we may not spend it in that year. And that's money that we collect to ask me to spend on parks, on construction repairs. Any question on that one? And we'll move on to page two fifty-five in that same tab, which is unemployment compensation fund. Similar thing there because that fluctuates significantly from year to year. We budget to spend what we have in the fund. We have no revenues going in. The only time we get revenues into this fund. Are when consolidated taxes come in higher than budget. Which hasn't happened in a little while, so there's nothing going into it, but we have enough balance to carry us forward for a couple of years, so few years hopefully. We want to room tax fund, page two fifty-nine. This is required to be spent. Uh, we have six points. Six cent levy on room taxes. And of that, we take five cents and use it towards. The Fair and Rodeo grounds and the Dayton Valley Zip Center for maintenance. And utilities and then the remainder part goes to the state and part goes to the room tax board to encourage tourism. Page two sixty-four is a stabilization fund. This is our rainy day fund. We're only able to touch this, um. For certain purposes under interest two or three fifty-four dot six one one five. We have about sixty. Sixty-five percent of the balance is allowed to be in here, but during the good years, we built it up a couple of times. When consolidated taxes came in higher than budget, we put some of that in people's fund and that's how that's been funded. For the recent years. Uh, we'll move on to vehicle acquisition fund, which is on page two sixty-eight. Again, we only have the four replacement vehicles or three replacement vehicles for sheriff's office here. So we'll move on to page two seventy-four, Fair and Rodeo Fund. This is just to put on the annual fair and rodeo. They charge. For the events, they take that money and use it to provide the entertainment and it. They build up enough fund balance so they can continue to hold that each year and not take any additional funds from. From the county to operate the actual event itself. Most of the other funds like the room tax fund and the general fund are just maintenance of the facilities, not putting on. Move on to page two eighty-one. Justice Court Special Administrative Assessment Fund. These are. Our assessments of the justice courts due by statute, uh, we're required to put it in there and they're under the control of this piece. Other than the capital outlay, the facilities ones and that is going towards the, uh. Towards the Dayton Government Complex and or if needed, uh, only justice complex if we will not have federal funds for that. We'll move on to two eighty-seven, which is the district court restricted fees fund. Similar, these are funds restricted by statute where they charge fees and they're under the control of the judges. Page two ninety-one, Justice Court or juvenile probation administrative assessment fund. And that one. They used to fund the work crew and we end up having to transfer money in every so often. We should be good for a couple of years more without having to transfer money in. Uh, they get some juvenile fines that go into here, but it's not enough to cover the work. We'll go on to page two ninety-six, which is the library gift fund. Those are. Funded through gifts to the library or sales of books and under the discretion of the library board, how it's spent. Page three hundred, we have the mining plane map fund. This is. Uh, revenue that's charged when they reported mining plane map. It's under by state law under the authority of the reporter to use the funds. She actually reduced her general fund request this year and is going to pay for some of those costs out of this fund. Till we run out of funds there. Page three oh four, nine one one surcharge fund. This is a telephone surcharge that we use for, uh. Communications to dispatch includes buying radios, uh, computers and corners for the. Uh, Sheriff's Office and. Some of the, um. Different districts. And some of the, uh, equipment dispatched as well and phone lines in the dispatch. Page three oh eight, animal control donation fund. We've had a couple of large donations over the year. I'm working on one right now. Where we have iris, someone passed away and we're getting it unfortunately. It's all in physical gold. So we either. Have to have it shipped to us and then we sell it with a contract with someone. To sell the gold and send us a check. So we're working on that process right now, but we appreciate the contributions. The next tabs cooperative extensions on page three twelve. This is a one cent tax levied by state law. We have no employees here anymore. It's basically, we use this money, the state's. Uh, University of Nevada uses this to run the cooperative simple. This is our matching funds. Road tab funds on page three seventeen, we have the road fund. One thing I will note is the. Secure rural schools program. We haven't had an act of Congress that's authorized this yet. It's usually around a hundred thousand dollars. Hopefully it will go through this legislative session. But we're not positive, so didn't budget for it for, for next year. But with that being said, we're close to a break even with budget expenditures, so we'll win more than we'll bring again. Hopefully that money comes in and keeps us holding. Move to page three twenty-six, which is the road improvement fund. This is levy to time building permit. We do the road construction tax. We're currently using most of this to purchase replacement equipment. You already saw the two pieces of equipment. We talked about capital outlay on there. And also buy some road base and different, uh, materials for the. For some of the work the road department does on roads. If you move to page three thirty. Five-year capital improvement plan for roads that shows the different pieces of equipment over the next few years that they're. Um, looking at including in requests as we go forward. But it includes the current year, which is those two pieces of equipment. We move to the next tab, the RTC tab, which is on page three thirty-one. This is the nine cent gas tax and the five cent diesel tax that comes into here. We also put the road construction tax for the two cities in here. It's under the, uh, control of the regional transportation commission fund. We budget to spend everything each year, but we do it on a cash basis. We pay out cash for the projects as we have cash. Uh, a bit of that is for each of the cities. Any questions on that one? And we'll move on to the human services tab on page three thirty-five. We have the opioid settlement fund. We're receiving settlement payment from here on a periodic basis and this shows what we're expecting to next year. We're budgeting to spend approximately what we're bringing in in this funding board, providing services, uh, to prevent. Uh. The opioid epidemic, those type of things. Move on to page three thirty-nine. If I can get there. The indigent funds. Our general indigent fund, I mean. We have a, a tax rate in this of three cents. We use that tax rate to leverage, uh, federal and state grants as match for those. And we provide a number of services for indigent. We also put. The marijuana business license is charged at the state level and remitted to us. We put that funding in here as well to help with indigent services. So.
How many, how many dispensaries? I've used that loosely. We have from marijuana.
I don't know that off the top of my head. I deal on the revenue side, not the. I just get checked from the state and put it there. So then we'll move on to page three fifty-five. Which is the medical indigent fund. This is where we pay for Medicaid match for our county residents. And also we're levying five cents. We're required to pay up to eight cents if actual claims are that high. This is one we're going to watch because. During COVID years, there was a lot of federal money that came in that covered that Medicaid match. And so we're just watching to see what this actually translates out to. It may be at some point. We're going to have to transfer three cents back from the general fund in here. We transferred in from, from here to the general fund last year, but we're going to. Watch that and see how we go with years and see if we need to and by how much we may need to. We also have a cent and a half for state indigent accident, one cent for state supplemental. We're also paying for the, uh, public health nurse contract with the state out of this fund. Again, the capital outlay, government complexes in here.
Mr. Foley. On this medical indigent, um, on this medical indigent, who? Who? And I, it's because I have no clue who would do this. Who monitors? Um, the people charging us for the medical indigent services?
So for the most part, the state takes care of that and then Shala Holmes is also involved in that discussion and, and works with the state on. On those different programs.
I'm not, I'm not a conspiracy theorist by nature, but. It just seems like. When you're dealing with this fund and, and, uh, medical indigent, it just seems like this is ripe for overcharging. And I'm just curious, who would monitor those, uh, service providers to make sure they're not gouging us?
Yeah, that's almost exclusively at the state level where they go through and do that, although Shira does have some involvement with them.
Gotcha.
Okay, we'll move on to page three sixty, which is a senior services fund. And this has a tax rate, um, of six cents in it as well. We budget to spend about where we bring in each year. That tax goes in and we're using it as match for the most part for state and federal grants. We also buy the food from the senior centers out of the tax rate in this one as well. And we are, uh, budgeting for replacement of two vehicles, just hopefully match for some grants on those if we can get them. Any questions there? Then we'll move on to page three seventy-nine. And I, as I'm going through these, I'm thinking, you know, I should have given shout outs to each one of the different departments. We have a. We have a fantastic team of department heads to take care of all these things for us and I appreciate each and every one of them. Uh, senior services donation fund. This has been funded with fundraisers and different donations. So the thrift shops that you see in the different senior centers or by the senior centers contribute funds for this and they use this. Uh, to buy different things for the seniors that the federal grants won't purchase special meals and those type of things for. Okay, we'll move on. I'm going to skip a few tabs. We're going to move back to the capital improvement tab. We'll revisit these when we recess. The ones we're skipping, we'll go to page four hundred on the capital improvements fund. Again, we've talked about the, the capital improvements on this being the Dayton Government Complex, currently justice court. The justice complex, uh, quarter cent sales tabs. We also send money to the. Counties out of here to replace some of the money they lost when we eliminated property tax in this fund. Uh, for their roads. And so we send them money out of here, uh, two hundred thousand dollars to the cities, uh, for roads. And we also do airports. The match for the FAA grants for the Silver Springs Airport out of this fund as well. Let's move on to the next tab, Lion County Utilities. On page four ten, we have the Dayton Water Fund. Again, we're budgeting fairly similar to spend what we bring in. They do have a handful of capital projects this next year. The Grosh Rose Peak water main replacement for phase one, a little over two point two million. Generator replacement for upper booster station, a little over two hundred and thirty thousand. A building alarm system. This is just the wire portion. They're splitting it between water and sewer, twenty-seven thousand. Three replacement vehicles and one new vehicle. Now these are split between water and sewer. This is just the water in those vehicles. We'll move on to the Dayton. We'll move on to page. Ages, uh, four nineteen and four twenty. That gives you the detail. Of the capital improvements that we just talked about and it also gives you a five-year plan. So you can see what they have. Coming up, uh, planned down the pike. And just so you're aware. These projects take a while. So even though we have them on a five-year plan, this may be closer to a seven to ten year plan. It doesn't. Always come about as quickly as, as we have on these pages, but we have the projects identified. So you're aware of them. We'll move on to page four twenty-one for Dayton Sewer Fund. This does have the increase in two additional positions so that we can. Um, and it's, those two positions are actually split equally between Dayton Water and Sewer. So the equivalent of one, one each. Um, capital projects. We've got the highway fifty Dayton Valley Road Gravity Line replacement for four point eight million. Rolling a sewer plant expansion that's continuing with the project we have in place. This is just next year's estimated amount of four million. Once we get that done, the existing portion of rolling A that wasn't part of the expansion, that equipment is. Many, many years old, so we need to go in and rehab and replace and those type of things. So that's approximately four point six million. Again, that building alarm system we talked about this and the replacement vehicles sewer portions in here as well. If you want to move to. I appreciate all the data that's here. Let's say all of our departments are good. So we go to pages four thirty-two. Or four thirty, yeah, four thirty-two and four thirty-three, those are your five capital improvement plans for the Dayton water. Or Dayton sewer system. And that concludes. You're on. So if you want to make a motion to approve the funds outside of the general fund as presented. Or let me know if there are any modifications that you would recommend. Or questions you have.
Any discussions from the world? Questions?
I got one question. I mean, not to beat it dead, but back on the on the travel, we've got all of these department budgets that we looked at, and a lot of them, most of them have a travel budget, child support, public guardian, the lobbying team, all those have a travel budget. Is there is there a possibility to take the travel budget for all the departments and make one travel budget for everybody?
So we recommend that we keep them separate, just so we know for federal grant purposes, child support would be a good piece, that they're paying for that and we're just charging for that. So you would want to keep them in separate departments to answer the one part of that question. The other part of the question is, we can definitely go back to some of the different departments that have travel and see is there a possibility that they would be able to give up some of it for years? But keep in mind, most of the travel that those departments are doing are required for their certifications. Like the sheriff's office has a significant amount, but they have to go to certain trains to keep their post certificates.
Sure, yeah, I'm just trying to understand, but yeah, thank you.
And the public guardian, their travel isn't to go to conferences for the most part, it's to go check on wards that are in other states sometimes where they get paid in residential, but we have to provide guardianship even depending on where they're at and maybe go up to Reno or to different places, as an example. So but we definitely will have that conversation with departments between now and time, but see what we can do.
Making motion on.
All the funds outside.
Through the Line County Tentative Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty six.
All of the funds outside of the general fund.
The tentative budget for all the funds outside the general fund.
Second.
Twenty five, twenty six. She's motion about Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Hockable. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay, well. We search to reconvene with the Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board on participation. Budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Possible action for the Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District, tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Okay, Joshua, Line County Controller for the record. This is gonna be under the Mason Valley Mosquito tab, and it's on page three eighty three for Andrew. And the only significant change, they have a tax rate in existence of eight point three eight cents, which no recommended changes there. We have a full time manager, some seasonal employees. They're requesting to purchase a U T B all terrain vehicle that they can go out and do some of their mosquito abatement in. They also increased the amount. They charged the Walker River Weed Control District thirty five has been ten thousand for decades, and we've upped that to thirty five thousand from the weed controlled district recommended to the board because of the amount of work the district manager does for that district. So those are the only significant changes from here to here. We do budget to spend a lot more than we anticipate in case you have a wet year and you need to spend a lot more on chemicals. And that's all I have for that budget. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Bring it back to the board. Is there any discussion? Or questions? Any public comment? Saying none, I'm entertaining motion.
I moved to approve the Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Tentative Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six.
So. I have a motion to Commissioner Hockable, second by Commissioner Hendricks. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Back to public participation. Do we have any public participation? I want to adjourn to review the Central Line County Vector Control District Board, any public participation? Now, moving on to the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. With possible action improves the central line vector, line count and vector control district tentative budget for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six.
Joshua, I can control for the record. This will be on page three ninety of the budget packet. It's the next tab in your in your binder. This this district spends central, stands central line county, has a tax rate of four and a half cents, actually exclusive Silver City, but everything but Silver City, central line area. And don't have any employees. We just have a contractor, the pest control contractor provides vector control services, which includes black fly and mosquito. Again, we budget, spend more than we anticipate spending in case we have a wet year and need to have more treatment.
I mean, just any discussion or questions?
Um, there's no employee, but we've got a wine item for workers' comp.
Yeah, so we have an advisory board that recommends things to this board and actually kind of handles some of the operations. And we pay workers' comp on the advisory boards.
Okay, okay.
Any more questions? Discussion? Public comment here? Saying none. In motion?
Move to approve the Central Lion County Vector Control District Tentative Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hendrick, Commissioner Commissioner Hockable, he's coming to the agency there. Second by Commissioner Castanelli. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Takes us back to public participation. Is there any public comment? Saying none. Adjourn to reconvene, Walker River Weed Control District Board and participation. I'm in the room. Tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six for possible action from the Walker River Weed Control District, tentative budget for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six.
Josh, Line County Controller, if you'll go to page three ninety four or the next tab in your packet. We have the Walker River Weed Control District. We have an assessment of eight point four seven cents on the land values in the district. Provides weed control for the agricultural lands. We did again increase from ten thousand to thirty five thousand in the amount that this pays to Mason Valley Mosquito District in the recommended budget. And all we have are seasonal employees here that are overseen by that district.
Any questions or comment?
Chair Keller.
What?
Um, just for curiosity, I'm trying to go off memory. Do we ever get updates and reports on these special districts and what kind of overview of what they do for the county?
So we haven't in a significant amount of time. We could probably ask. They have advisory boards for the mosquito and the weed control districts as well, and those take care of the day to day operations and the day to day management of that employee on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, but we can definitely, I think it's I would guess it's been more than ten years since I've seen Mr. Bud Stinson presenting the Board of County Commissioners. I could be wrong, but it may have been a little more recent.
I I for one would think that would be good for the public to hear where their tax dollars are going. So if we could get them, I would like to request that we invite somebody from these to give an update, acre spray, whatever.
Okay, well, outside of the budget, I'm sure it's been noted by the county manager and we can move forward on that.
Any more comments, more questions? Any comment? None. Maintaining motion.
I guess I'll move to approve the Walker River Weed Control District Tentative Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Hockable, second by Commissioner Castanelli. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Of participation. Is there any public comment? Not in the room. To adjourn. To adjourn as the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board. Public participation. Is there any public comments? Saying none in the room, none on the line. Tentative budget for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six for possible action, approve the Silver Springs General Improvement District Tentative Budget for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. I have to stop that for just for a second. I gotta I got a question. We don't got counsel.
I'm in the Silver Springs Mutual Water Company, we own a contract negotiations with them, so what I'm going to do is
I don't have one prepared. I'm gonna have to stand from this because I sit on the Silver Springs Mutual Water Company. And as a member of this board, and the budget, it's a contract between the two, so I'm going to abstain and turn it over to Commissioner Hendricks to finish this one out.
Already asked for public comments, um, Mr. Foley.
Okay, Josh, for Line County Controller for the record, we'll go to page four thirty nine, which you're gonna skip a couple of tabs to get to the Silver Springs G I D, second to last tab. On this particular one, we have a capital project coming up of a little bit over a million four to rehab the disinfection and filter system at the plant. We also have a cost, the sledge removal. We do that every few years. It's gonna be about a million four is what we're estimating in the budget. So we're budgeting spent significantly more than we're bringing in for those purposes. Uh, but both of those hopefully will be one time expenditures for a while. Significantly, well, the second piece that I want to talk about is the Silver Springs Mutual Water Company, we've been paying three thousand dollars a month for eighteen years, I think, uh, for them to provide the billing services and the collection services, and then the USA locates uh, for people who are are digging and and those type of things for water and sewer lines in Silver Springs. They have come back. They requested six thousand dollars a month instead of three thousand dollars a month, saying that the C P I since the last time the contract was negotiated should be at least double of what it was. I did the math, CPI is fifty one percent over that time period, so we went back and proposed forty five hundred dollars, which would be about a fifty one percent increase. We just received back, I think yesterday, yesterday was a busy day. We received back yesterday a proposal from them for five thousand dollars a month and increasing, I believe, a thousand dollars a month for the next few years, or increasing to the next year instead of uh, five thousand a month, maybe six thousand a month, and then the next year, seven thousand a month, and so on and so forth for a time period. We currently pay just for their, those services, the deposits to the bank, their billing services and those type of things. We pay for the software they use for the billing software. We pay for the postage. We pay for the the stock for the billings and all of those things. We have done an analysis and we think that we could save a few thousand dollars a year, maybe multiple thousands of dollars a year, if we had Dayton Utilities take over that service and do there what they do with the other places. We're still evaluating that as obviously we got the email yesterday from Silver Springs Mutual Water Company on what's best for the ratepayers and trying to figure out what that is. It would have an impact on Dayton on Dayton Water and Sewer because they would have more work that they would need to do in the community for the USA line locates. When we have the negotiations with the Mutual Water Company, they're like, we do this, we line locates or USA digs, and so we're gonna charge you this amount to respond to it all alike, but you're already responding to those properties because you have to respond on the water side anyway. So why are we giving charge the whole cost of all of your responses? And at a significant higher rate than what it's actually costing. Um, and their answer is because we're having these discussions, and this is what we would charge you if we if we're gonna move forward. I I prefer to have the billing in a centralized spot and have the people in the community go pay in one spot for water and sewer and have a one stop shop. But when it gets to the point that it is going to impact them in their pocketbooks significantly, that's where we need to do some evaluation. So what we've done at the moment is build in enough in the contract services to cover the forty five hundred dollars that we initially uh, proposed to them. They're obviously coming back with another six thousand dollars for the year on top of that. We also have the option of hiring an employee on our side to do the USA digs and those type of things, and splitting that employee between that and perhaps somewhere else, but and actually responding for those, putting perhaps a drop box for people to make payments and picking that up and taking the the stuff to Dayton to process those bills and so on and so forth. I think we could do it for significantly less than what the proposed amount is. At this point, I would just request we adopt the budget as is and give us the ability to do some further analysis between now and final budget, bringing back some more information on that. But those are the discussions that were in the piece together, and that also goes hand in hand with the next district that we're doing, how we handle that one as well. So um, that's that's the discussion on this one. I'm open to answer any questions.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Well, thank you. Uh, thank you, Chair Hendricks. Um, Mr. Foley. Will you revisit that first thing you said, or one of the first things you said, and I'll help try and jog your memory? They said it was gonna cost this. You did a cost analysis and you said it would cost this. Could you re go over that one more time?
Yes, so they brought up that originally when we signed the contract, which hasn't been changed for eighteen years, I believe, approximately eighteen years. We were doing three thousand dollars a month. They came back and said CPI, things have doubled since that time, so we want to double our cost to six thousand dollars a month uh, because CPI has gone up by that amount. So I pulled up the CPI tables, because that's the kind of guy I am. And I went and did the math, and it was right at, right around fifty one percent is what the CPI has increased over the last eighteen years. So we took that fifty one percent, rounded it to fifty percent, took it times the three thousand dollars a month, it came out with forty five hundred dollars a month and said, why don't we do this amount? And they came back and countered with five thousand a month for next year instead, and six thousand the year after, and seven thousand the year after, and so on and so forth.
So did they, I I guess I I guess I'm at a loss. Are they trying to make money off the county?
You know, I I'm not even going to speculate on their motivations. Um, we can have discussions in private if you want to, but I don't know what their motivation is here other than to bring the contract up to a more equitable amount. We do believe that the amount is, we believe the service is valuable. We like working with them. However, at some point, if we have to go back to the ratepayers there and say because we like them so much, it's gonna cost you five dollars a month more for your sewer service. Is that really what we should be doing if we can provide it for less than that? That's the analysis we're trying to come bring to the board, but this one, it came up late in the process. We're still ironing some of those pieces out and trying to figure out who's on first and what's on second.
So because this is a tentative or a uh, let me get the wording absolutely correct. Um. This is a tentative budget here, correct?
Yes.
So is this something we can bring back for the final?
Yes.
Because this, this this one is really quite odd to me, so I would like this one brought back as well, yeah.
Absolutely.
Any other commissioner comments or questions?
No, my opinion is that I think we're being reasonable with the fifty point five one. Definitely a thousand more every year is a thousand more every year is not, to me, it's not, it's not really a reasonable thing, since, uh, you know, we're only looking at a basically a fifteen hundred dollar increase over eighteen years. I think you've calculated out everything appropriately and um, I think our offer is good, so I think you're doing fine. I would say press on with what you're doing and then look at the alternatives that you're making and we'll decide on that later, I guess, but.
Okay.
Looks good to me so far.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
Can you say a public comment on this item? Seeing none on liner in the room, uh, entertaining motion?
I'll move to approve the Silver Springs General Improvement District tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six with the continued negotiation, uh, with, from staff.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion by Commissioner Hockaday, second by Commissioner Jacobson, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion carries.
Well, so you can note for the record.
Keller has returned to chambers and he will handle item seventeen.
What it's an abstention on, that we had.
Oh, I guess, yes, Commissioner Keller abstained from this item. So. Uh, participation under this um, is open, seeing none, we'll move forward, adjourn, and Commissioner Keller will take over.
Good, we'll adjourn to looking at the local general improvement district, is there any public comment? Down in the room, one, one. Brings us to budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Josh Foley, line county controller for the record, so this one, uh, we're still a work in process as well, for many years we've filed a contract similar to what we went over in the last district, this one's with the city of Earrington to operate the district, Royal Creek General Improvement District, uh, there were the tax rate of one point five six cents in this one. We do need to do a rate increase over time on this one, because we haven't raised the rates in a number of years. But we're trying, it's a chicken and egg thing, we need to figure out what we're going to do, is the city of Earrington is going to continue to provide this service. We're in those discussions, they are in the middle of, I believe, in a week or two, hire, they'll have a new public works director coming on board. And so we're just trying to get that process and figure out what they want to do, what that price is going to be. Do we continue with them? Do we also go out and hire a half-time employee here and a half-time employee in Silver Springs and have that person split, uh, between the two districts? What does that look like? We don't know the answer to that, but we're actively pursuing that answer to that. So my recommendation at this point is to, uh, approve it as is, and we'll bring back more information to final budget time.
Any questions or comments?
Oh, I did have on page four forty-nine. There is a five-year capital improvement plan. Or, oops, I've got the wrong, never mind, that isn't accurate, wrong page. We're gonna lose out that word.
I've got a question. On, on the, the last one, Silver Springs had a pretty significant electric line, which I'm assuming is to run those pumps. And this one, I don't see anything for that. Are they not running pumps there, or is, I'm, I'm wondering why it would be?
Right, so I think right now those are going through our supplies line item, we don't have a lot of of additional costs there, there's a little bit of electric, but I think it's going through supplies, I should set up a, you're right, I should set up a separate electric bill for that.
So it's categorized under the supplies?
Any questions, comments? Any public participation? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
To approve the Royal Creek General Improvement District tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Hockaday, those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Public participation, is there any public comments? None in the room, none, we'll join the reconveniences, line county board of commissioners, uh, commissioners' comments. Uh, I'll start with Rob first.
Thank you, Chair Keller, um, I just want to thank Mr. Foley and his staff, um, and all the department heads for working together to make budget cuts and, and, uh, help, um, kind of manage, uh, the downfall in funds we're going to be experiencing. Um, and then also I want to thank the staff for picking up slack, um, on the day-to-day basis for positions that we're not able to fill. So just want to give a shout out to all those folks.
Commissioner Hockaday.
Commissioner Jacobson took the words right out of my mouth, absolutely thankful for everybody in the staff and yourself, uh, to, uh, put in all the hard work to come up with the budget that we can live over the next year. Thank you very much for everybody's work.
Yeah, I just echo you know, a lot of work you've done here and there's a lot there, it's very comprehensive and appreciate that and appreciate, uh, working to save jobs and, uh, all that hard work that you put into it, appreciate it.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Yes, I want to, uh, thank you, and once again, you always make the material really easy to understand and follow for those of us who aren't Josh Foley, and really appreciate that, and thank you for all the hard work and, and for staff and the department heads, I mean, it's obviously, this is the most purer one I've seen, and, uh, good job, everyone.
I would like to thank you, I think you did a fantastic job, all the staff and everything else, but I'd also like to thank my fellow commissioners for, uh, entertaining the thing, the throttle expense, so we can protect the investments that we've done. I think that it's, uh, I'll take the blame on the fact that I probably am not explaining, uh, quite what we do in NACO as much as I should. So in the future, I'll probably go into a little more detail at, at our regular meetings, every time I have a meeting, so you guys are more informed of what is actually going on and, and, uh, so at least you can make the decision with knowing what I'm trying to, uh, represent, but I do thank you for considering it. Any participation?
Participation, I just wanted to thank everybody in the county and Andrew especially, Andrew spends, you have no idea how many hours on this process as well. Appreciate you, and all of the department heads, I, we have fantastic.
And I, I'd like to thank Andrew, he's been really good about keeping all of us updated day-to-day as things have constantly been changing.
I would have to echo that, but, uh, so there, there's something a lot of people aren't taking into consideration is that the time that he spends at the legislature and all the bills that are happening right now, we've kind of got two storms hit, hit at once, so it's a good thing that we have a good team. Good, other comments still? Seeing none in the room, none on line.
Oh, we got a comment from.
No, I was just waving goodbye, see you tomorrow.
He's craft thirty-seven, we're adjourned.